It is now 7:00 PM. We're going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Crestview Middle for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from our schools to assist with greeting and signing in our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressiveness, inappropriate language, or name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board may take a recess until such time the audience is appropriate. If inappropriate behavior continues by individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If the audience becomes so inappropriate in their behavior that we can't conduct our business, the board reserves the right to adjourn the meeting. This Board of Education meeting is livestreamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. U2 reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. We want everyone to have the ability to hear the business of the district, reports presented, and the comments of everyone who is here to speak. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. This evening, we do have a number of patron comments, and we are allocating up to one hour of time for this portion of the meeting agenda. If anyone who has submitted a comment card does not get the opportunity to speak, please know, I'm sorry, I just started reading the wrong item, so forgive me. I'm going to go back to where I was, since we're not at patron comments. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. Before we move on to tonight's agenda, we ask that you join us in extending our deepest sympathies to the Marquette High School community following the loss of Assistant Principal Carl Hudson, who passed away yesterday following an extended illness. He was a joy to be around, a great mentor and friend, and he personally touched the lives of countless students and colleagues. He will be greatly missed. Our thoughts and prayers are with everyone who knew and loved Carl. Next, could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education work session meeting minutes for November 29th, 2021?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for December 2nd, 2021?
So move.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, one abstention. That passes, thank you. And next, we are at patron comments. During patron comments, citizens may address the Board of Education concerning issues related to the school district. This Board of Education meeting is livestreamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. U2 reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time. When your time is up, your time is up. Please note that at the board's discretion, the board or superintendent may respond immediately to an issue raised during patron comments for clarification. However, our general practice is to respond to the comment at a later time via a phone call or written message if a response is needed. This evening, we do have a number of patron comments, and we are allocating up to one hour of time for this portion of the meeting agenda. If anyone who has submitted a comment card does not get the opportunity to speak, please know that you also have the opportunity to submit your comments to the board at any time. We have a stand in the back with microphones ready, so both the board and the audience may hear the patron comments clearly. As a reminder, masks are required in our buildings and should remain on even when you are speaking. The board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and your perspective. Once your remarks are over, please return to your seat. I would like to remind everyone that we expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks, and if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut those three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language and vulgarity in any form is not acceptable, whether you are reading someone else's remarks or they are your own. It will not be tolerated. For your convenience, our three-minute time clock is ready.
Our first speaker this evening is Elizabeth Cohen, and our second speaker is Rich Cohen.
I believe the Rockwood School District, the superintendent, and the Board of Education are not above the law as Dr. Ricker claims. According to the Missouri Board Association, the School Board Association, regarding the role of school board in responding to coronavirus, the board directs district employees to do what is necessary within the limits of the law. From the MSBA website, our communicable diseases policy requires that the district follow state and local law or the Department of Health and Senior Services regulations regarding the control of disease. Rockwood Policy 0100 states, "The school district is organized under the authority of the state legislature and exercises powers delegated directly and indirectly by the Missouri State Legislature." Rockwood Oath of Office states in part, "I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, and I will abide by and uphold Rockwood School District Board Member Code of Ethics." Rockwood Policy 0340, Code of Ethics, "The purpose of the Board of Education is to govern and control the affairs of the district as provided by law." Both Missouri Statute 167.191 and Rockwood Policy 2860, which Dr. Ricker used as substantiation for making health regulations, state that it is unlawful for any child who is afflicted with a contagious or infectious disease to attend public schools. Afflicted means grievously affected as by disease. The afflicted refers to people who are ill. Synonyms include infirm, sickly, diseased, and sickish. I don't think anyone would disagree that a child who is afflicted with a contagious disease should not attend school. Masks and quarantines have never been Rockwood policy, but staying home when sick has been for as long as I've lived here. Rockwood Policy 2606, which was revised in September of 2021 to satisfy the requirements of Section 160.263 of the Missouri statute states, "The districts shall not use any mechanical, physical, or prone restraint techniques that obstructs views of the student's face, obstructs the student's respiratory airway, impairs the student's breathing or respiratory capacity, involves covering the face or body with anything, restricts the student from communicating." Clearly, covering a student's face with a mask is not acceptable to Rockwood. Also, I want to just, I'm going to end with, I have a son who has severe life-threatening allergies. He has graduated from Rockwood. When he was in elementary school, parents hated being in his class and would complain, and, "Oh, but my kid has to have peanut butter all they'll eat," and he had many allergies. I quickly learned that I had to be responsible for my son, and I had to teach him how to live in this world, that I could not trust other people to protect him, and I would have needed the whole school to go free of all of his allergens, which would have been impossible, and I wouldn't have asked of the people. Other people have issues they are managing as well. My son's issues were no more important than theirs, even if I couldn't see theirs. Mental health is just as important. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rich Cohen, and after that, Erin Wig.
All right. Well, I am not speaking to any of these board members this evening because I've learned it's a complete waste of time. The board members never listen to us anyway, so hello to everybody watching from home. First thing I'll say, all of us here tonight would love to see more of you here in person. You don't need to speak, just attend. What we're doing here is actually working, and some people aren't happy about our success, so let's keep this thing going. There's no mask mandate anywhere within the state of Missouri, not even in St. Louis City, contrary to what some news sources have chosen to say. Our Missouri State Attorney General Eric Schmidt and the Missouri Supreme Court secured that law for all of us. So, I'm here in a mask. Why is that? That's because the new threat from the Rockwood people that we learned as of this evening is trespassing. I could not be in here without this mask, otherwise they would arrest me for trespassing. Isn't that interesting? So, just to be clear, everyone has the right to wear a mask or to not wear a mask. Everybody understand that part of it? It's completely your choice as a citizen of the United States of America and the great state of Missouri. But trespassing, remember that. We're going to get to that another time. So, did you hear about maskless students being segregated from mask-wearing students within our Rockwood schools? Segregation of children in public schools was actually struck down by the United States Supreme Court as completely unconstitutional back in 1954 with Brown v. Board of Education. It's illegal to segregate for any reason whatsoever. It's against the law. Who agrees? Who agrees it's time for our great police officers to arrest these horrible adults who made this decision? That is a real enforceable law. Here's a fun fact for all of you parents. You can file suit against any of these people individually for violating this law or any of the laws. None of them is covered by that qualified immunity thing since they've been duly warned and are therefore knowingly violating the existing law. Our Missouri State Attorney General Eric Schmidt already provided the fair warning to each and every one of these people. I'm really looking forward to seeing a few of these offenders behind bars for their illegal actions. How's that sound to you, Dr. Ricker?
Next speaker, Erin Wig, and after that, Lauren Blevins.
Hey. Everybody, please, let's give the speaker time to speak.
Thank you to the Rockwood School Board for listening to comments on such an important decision. As a proud parent of two boys at Babler Elementary, I've seen how Rockwood's mask and quarantine policies have effectively limited the spread of COVID throughout the school. There have been cases here and there, but no uncontrolled spread. My view is that the existing COVID policies have served the district well to control the spread of an airborne virus. This isn't only about keeping school-aged children safe. It's also about doing our best to limit the spread of an airborne virus that causes potentially fatal illness. My 82-year-old uncle recently died from COVID. I have an immunocompromised niece, under 30 years old, that was in and out of the hospital multiple times during her battle with COVID. I'm sure others here have been impacted by the pandemic as well. This decision isn't just about my kids or your kids. This decision will affect our entire community. Nobody enjoys these mandates. Nobody wants this to continue indefinitely. Even so, a change in COVID mitigation strategies should be data-driven. Is the district in a better place regarding COVID cases right now compared to the summer or the beginning of the school year? The data indicates we are not in a better place, if you look at the St. Louis County data. I'd like to read, I'd like to read the key findings from the St. Louis County Department of Public Health's Update on COVID-19 in Schools posted on the St. Louis County website on December 14th. Case counts are rising sharply among both students and staff. For the week ending December 4th, 2021, staff cases were at their highest and student cases were at their second highest for the current school year. Second bullet point, there were 551 pediatric COVID cases diagnosed in St. Louis County in the week ending December 4th, 2021, more than any single week since November 2020. Third bullet point, COVID-19 is spreading unchecked in St. Louis County. Because of this, mitigation measures including vaccination, masking, keeping kids home when sick, getting tested remain critical for keeping our school communities safe. I encourage the Rockwood Board to exercise their authority in setting safety standards for the district based on gained experience and factual data. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Lauren Blevins. After that, Johanna Bodine. Excuse me, Johanna Bodine, and then Lauren Blevins. Pardon me.
Good evening. It's the holiday season, so I'm here to give grace tonight. I give grace to all of our wonderful teachers. It's hard to stand up when your employer is acting in opposition to the law. We appreciate where you pushed back and when you couldn't. Our children saw it. We know you look the other way as children wore their masks under their nose or on their chin. We know you recognized the dangers and challenges masking and quarantine poses to the children were far greater than the benefits of masking. You know our children and their germs, while gross, are not to be feared. To the district, please clarify the language in the resolution from masks recommended to masks optional. Don't leave our teachers in a position where they feel they can't make a choice for themselves because their employer is recommending something. I'm also here to say thank you to all of these fantastic parents and kids who showed up for themselves tonight and these past few weeks. You also stood up for other kids and families and teachers' rights, those who weren't in a place to stand up for themselves. You are our future leaders. Stand proudly. There will continue to be adults who wish to shame you and cast you apart, to exclude you and segregate you. Yes, to all of the educators sitting in front of us who espouse your support of diversity, equity, and inclusion, only God knows if you can look yourselves in the mirror after your actions or inactions the past 20 months. To those on the board who seek to silence and limit our voices, let me give you a tip. This might not be the right week to try that. We're watching you closely, we won't be silent, and we will not go away. We are here because these are our children.
Rockwooder speak, please.
Genesis 50:20, "As for you, you meant evil against me, but God meant it for good."
Next speaker, Lauren Blevins, and after that, Kalen Blevins.
Hi, I'm Lauren Blevins. I'm a 7th grader at LaSalle Springs Middle School, and this whole pandemic has wasted two years of my life. It has impacted my education, and it has affected the well-being of not only me, but my friends. I know more people struggling with anxiety and depression over these past two years. The last few days, seeing my friends at school without their masks and seeing their smiling face has made these past few days better. We already have the freedom to wear masks if we want, according to the law. The role of the public school is to educate everyone masked or unmasked. It is not your role to tell students what they should do with their physical and mental health. Educators need to step aside and stick to their goal of educating everyone. Educators should and do not have more power over the students than their parents. If Rockwood School District really cared about the safety of the students, then there would be more of a focus and an effort into treating and preventing suicide. I look forward to Jan. After break, I can return to school and see all my friends and other students without their masks. Thank you.
Next speaker is Caleb Blevins, and after that, Kenneth Dickman.
Hello, I am Caleb Blevins. I go to Blevins Elementary. I think that we should not have to wear masks. If you are going to make me wear masks, I am not going to. The Board of Education, you guys are forgetting, this is America, the land of the free. And you, and all people, we should be able to be free to wear a mask. Maybe you should think better. If you really wanted the students to be safe, then you should not segregate them. You should give them an option. You should be able to have them do what they decide, what the students decide. So how about you start getting more wise and make that mask rule optional from now on? Maybe you should understand what the students think, what the educators think, what the parents think.
Next speaker, Kenneth Dickman. After Kenneth is Missy Graham.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Kenny Dickman, and I'm a freshman at Eureka High School. I have three brothers that go to Eureka Elementary and LaSalle Springs Middle School. I've seen firsthand how masks affect students here in Rockwood School District. We've seen an increased suicide rate, higher rates of depression, and a lack of interest in going to school. A good example of this is my little brother who attends Eureka Elementary. Before the mask mandate, he loved going to school and seeing his friends. He has now lost all excitement to attend because of the pressure to wear his mask. He told me he uses his bathroom breaks as a time to pull his mask down and breathe. My six-year-old brother has never known school without a mask. He told me that he just wants to breathe. Masks have been pushed so hard on him that he cries, thinking he might kill one of his classmates if he takes it off. It feels like some teachers and administrators care more about mask compliance than taking time to get to know their students. It is well-studied that masks take away one sense of identity, but this is not just about masks. This is about our voices and rights. If we do not have the right to choose if we can wear a mask or not, then when do we have to wear a uniform? When are we going to be forced to attend only classes that someone else tells us to take? These past few days, our rights afforded to us by the Missouri Constitution and our voices have both been taken away, and the only question right now is how long and how far this will go. My other brother attends LaSalle Springs Middle School. For the past several days, he was separated and segregated from his friends because of his beliefs and thoughts on the issue at hand. For the past few days, going to school has been immensely hard for him because his teachers will not let him in their classrooms, and virtual learning at this point is non-existent. I've talked to several people that attend school in the district, and we all agree that we should not be separated based on whether we wear a mask or not, because we all deserve access to the same open learning. These experiences that I've mentioned highlight how students are suffering with this mandate and how our rights are being violated. As students in Rockwood, we are standing up for the voices and rights for all students and staff. We feel this proposal by the Rockwood administration would fix much of these problems and maintain the freedom that every citizen is afforded in America. And while at first, adapting to new situations may be hard, but we cannot keep living in the past and in fear, we have to move forward and change this mandate. Here's a quote from Arnold Bennett, "Any change, even a change for the better, is always accompanied by discomfort." Thank you all for your time, and we urge you to vote in favor of the mask optional plan.
Next speaker, Missy Graham. And after Missy, Logan Graham. Missy Graham is our next speaker, and after that is Logan Graham. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That works.
I have to pull this down. There's actually two things that I'm very concerned about. One are the books that we keep in the library. My kids will be going to middle school next year, so I'm very concerned about this. I think we need to have a discussion about these types of books. It is pornographic material. A man, well, I can't say it, my kid's here, but a man and a boy, that's just not right. So, I hear you guys bragging about these books a lot. You vote to keep them in the libraries, and I kind of question what kind of character you have behind, in a personal situation. So, you know, we have an election coming up next year, and I look forward to seeing how you defend these books, because it's really gross. But I'm here mainly about the masks today. I'm sorry, I have a cold and I'm losing my voice. But my son has, he's a twin, boy and a girl, and my daughter doesn't seem to have a problem wearing a mask. She hates it, she wants to take it off, but she has no problem breathing. My son, Logan, does have a problem, and he can't breathe. He's missed seven days of school this year alone because his nose will get stopped up and I have to go pick him up. I tried to take him back, but I get a call every time to come pick Logan up because he can't breathe. He's missed seven days of school, like I said. That is more than he's ever missed in Rockwood, ever. So, his STAR reports, he used to score between 90 and 95 on his STAR reports. He's dropped 20 points. He hates school. He used to get up at 5:30 in the morning wanting to go to school, couldn't wait to see his friends, had a blast, and now I can't even get him out of bed. It's 7:30, he hates the mask, he can't breathe. It's been two years, let him go. There's plenty of schools around Missouri that are mask optional. My nephew has never had to wear a mask, and that's in Phelps County. And they don't have any higher rates than we do. This is ridiculous. It's a weapon, and it's a tool, to get people vaccinated. And I think you need to take into consideration all the suicides and all the depression, because I'm very worried about my kid. If your child wants to wear a mask, so be it. If it's that good, they're protected. You shouldn't have to care about my child, but I do care about my children, and I don't want them to hurt anymore, and this is hurting them emotionally. And you guys should know this, and if you don't know this, you shouldn't be sitting on this board. That's it.
Next speaker is Mason Mayer, and after that, Linda Himmelman.
Good evening. My name is Mason Mayer, and I'm a senior at Eureka High School. I have two main concerns that I'll be addressing. The first of my concerns has come from the requirement of masks not allowing the student-teacher relationships to grow and develop like they have in past years. When you mix students that do not want to wear masks with teachers that will go over the top in an attempt to get students to wear the masks, heads will butt. Heads have been butting at Eureka for too long now, and student-teacher relationships have not been able to form or develop because of it. Due to students not having the relationships we have had previously with the teachers, school is becoming a lot harder than it has been in the past. My second concern is the message Dr. Ricker has been sending to all the students he is in charge of. That message being, you do not have to listen to what the government officials tell you to do. I do not think that is a good message to be sending to the tens of thousands of students you're in charge of.
Next speaker, Linda Himmelman, and after that, Jonah Kuntzler.
Good evening. This is my third time to come to the school board and to speak to all of you, and I've never been able to finish my story, and I have to be honest, I've timed myself, and I know it takes more than three minutes. Dr. Ricker, may I please have more than three minutes to finish my story so I don't have to come back again?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Three minutes for every person so that it's fair. Thank you.
Well, at that point, I don't think I will share my story. I'll just leave now, but thank you.
Next speaker is Jonah Kuntzler, after that, Triton Edgar.
Good evening. My name is Jonah Kuntzler. I'm a senior at Eureka High School and have three siblings who attend Rockwood schools. Over the past two weeks, I've spent many hours researching statistics regarding the COVID health policies of local school districts. From my research, I've concluded that this current mask mandate and other restrictions are unreasonable and may never have been necessary. Across the nation, there are Across the nation, there are approximately 72 million people under the age of 18, and only 644 of those people have died from COVID-19. During the two years of this pandemic, taking into account flu and pneumonia deaths, the number drops to 394. There are tens of millions of people under the age of 18 in the United States who attend public school or institution. Rockwood has consistently used the CDC to justify their COVID-related decisions. However, according to the CDC, children five to 14 years old have a 0.2% chance of dying from COVID. Homicide is 0.7, drowning is 0.5%, suicide is 1.5%, which I'll return to, cardiovascular disease 0.6%, flu and pneumonia 0.3%. As you can see, there are worries greater than this virus. St. Louis County has the strictest mandates in the area with the worst results. The percentage of people who have died, been in hospitals, and been in ICUs is all higher in St. Louis County than in neighboring St. Charles County, which has had almost no mandates. Schools in Florida have been back without masks for this entire semester, and Florida has been some of the best COVID results for kids in the nation. While I do not believe the mandates work, we do know the mandates have huge negative effects. The suicide rate is up 250% since last October. A recent surgeon general report stated that in 2021, there was a 51% increase in ER visits for women for suicide, and a large increase for men as well. This topic is particularly important to me, as I just recently lost a friend of mine to suicide, who used to be in this district, and whose name I won't say out of respect for him and his family. Masks also make socializing significantly harder, which is one of the most important aspects of school. This takes a serious toll on the mental health of us students. It makes it harder for us to communicate and harder for us to empathize with each other. Being able to empathize with friends and family and mental health go hand in hand. A recent Oxford study shows that young children's development has dropped by 23% on many key metrics, including reading ability, as a result of the COVID restrictions, including masks. Masks make learning harder, making your job of teaching harder, and reduce the quality of our education. And yet, this district has decided to go against all of that, as well as the will of the taxpayer. I understand that at the very beginning, we didn't know all the facts, but it has been nearly two years. We now know much more. It is time to comply with the laws set out by the courts, as explained by our Attorney General. In closing, I ask that you take my words of warning about the negative effects of these COVID rules into consideration and change your policy. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Trenton Edgar. And after Trenton is Amanda Simkins.
My name is Trenton Edgar, and I'm a senior at Eureka High School. I am speaking with several students from Eureka High School, many of which have already gone: Kenny Dykman, Mason Mayer, Jonah Kuntzler, and Jack Lawman. This group consists of athletes, jazz band orchestra members, students with excelling GPA and ACT scores, Missouri Scholar Academy recipients, and even a pilot. We have taken a lot of abuse on social media for standing up against COVID restrictions. We wanted to know. You guys know that we are serious about this, and we do not take this matter lightly. Since March of 2020, we have all complied and followed your pandemic mandates really throughout the entire pandemic, without speaking our minds. Sorry, this is a really big document. We feel the board has not truly listened to the students and parents of Rockwood. We are here to explain to you how many of the students feel about the COVID mandate. We feel we have been underrepresented and are here to speak up for our rights. I support removing mask mandates, among other COVID restrictions, and many of my speakers do also agree, and have already stated their unique points of view. I want to state clearly that this is not about politics, as many people have tried to make it. This is not a political debate for us. That's not what this is about. A few days ago, the Democratic Supreme Court of Pennsylvania ruled these mandates to be wrong and immediately vacated all mandates in the state. Both Democrats and Republicans are ruling this mask mandate to be wrong and unconstitutional. This is not a one-sided argument. And even the World Health Organization has advised it wisely to stop masking kids. And European countries, many of them, including England, have never masked kids in school at all through any point in the pandemic. Again, this is not a political debate, and this is an issue where our rights are at stake, and it is time you start listening to students. We believe everyone in this debate should treat each other with love and respect, and this goes to all of you guys shouting at everybody else up here, both with and against me. Stop it. We should treat everybody with love and respect. Our intentions are not to harm anybody or cause any negative effects upon anyone. It doesn't matter who stands behind us or not. We are just here to purely stand up for the rights of all students and staff of Rockwood. And change is hard. We all know that quite well over these past few years. And earlier during the pandemic, we were told we would all die from stepping out of the field and playing sports. But Rockwood was one to say, we're going to let our kids play sports, which opened the door for many athletic scholarships that I'm sure they're all very grateful for. There's no reason to stand back and refuse change, which is part of the reason why we are in full support of voting yes on this new mask mandate, I guess, to make this mask mandate optional. Wearing masks optional, I'm sorry, no longer a mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Amanda Simkins. And after Amanda, Jackson Lawman.
To be honest, I don't have to say a word, because my biggest concern has been made blatantly apparent by the animosity in this room. My children attend both schools that were harassed last week over masks. One where parents attempted to infiltrate the building, and the other where a parent tried to get on a school bus with a gun to intimidate the driver. In addition, at one of our high schools, students were caught pulling down the mask of other students, intentionally coughing in their face, and then calling them a sheep. First informers might concern us for the safety of students. Will the next mass shooting be of masked students? Because there is such animosity toward them? Those who jeopardize the safety of students need to be held accountable. My child, who is immune-compromised, will have to continue wearing a mask, regardless of whether others do or not. I fear he'll be a target, not only mentally but socially, from others, and I have grave concern for his safety. I urge you to consider this in your decision. Be sure to make protocol for situations accordingly. Secondly, and this is hard to say, I'm a veteran teacher in a neighboring district that has been maskless. I urge you that when you're contemplating and making your decision regarding a mask, that you use data to form your decisions. During the last few weeks, my district has had 56 positive cases. We have less than 7,000 students. Rockwood has had 66, just 10 more, and they have 22,000 students. It's obvious that the mitigation strategies that we're using are working. After all, the reason I chose to purchase my home here was because of the outstanding data that Rockwood School District has shown over the years. It was obvious then, from looking at the data, and I hope that the district will make the best decision for its students and staff in this as well. I have faith that this data will continue. That's all I got. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jackson Lawman, and after him will be Derek Pratt.
My name is Jack Lawman, and I am a senior at Eureka High School. I have a younger brother that goes to a Rockwood Middle School in the local area. These past two years have been very difficult for not only myself, but all Rockwood students. From asynchronous learning and being unable to see our friends, to an attempted return to normalcy with incessant masking and a restriction of normal social interaction. It has been a very long road to get to this point. We have been told that Rockwood was required to do many of these policies because it's in the St. Louis County, and that the county makes the rules the district has to follow. Recently, the Missouri court stripped St. Louis County and all counties in Missouri from being able to make these COVID restrictions. The decision also changed what schools are allowed to do, and school guidelines are directly referenced in that case. The court ruling specifically states that mandates are unlawful and overrides order. Since many school districts, including Rockwood, had ignored the court, Missouri Attorney General Eric Schmidt issued a cease and desist letters to multiple school districts, warning them to stop ignoring the court's decisions, again, Rockwood included. The Rockwood School District cites a separate statute. However, as our state attorney general has indicated, the statute does not grant them the right to override the court's decisions, nor does it grant the schools or districts the power to determine any public health decisions. Lastly, since the St. Louis court mask mandates were determined to be unlawful and were finally dropped by County Executive Sam Page, there is no mask mandate in the county of St. Louis, which should include all county schools. As our attorney general put it in his cease and desist letter, "We have rights that are guaranteed by the Constitution of this state." What has this taught many of us students? Well, it has taught us that the powers that be in the school district believe that supersede the laws of the court and the state of Missouri, and also the state's highest-ranking elected official. It has taught us that the rule of the law does not apply when a school district is making their own decisions. It has also taught us that upon the absence of presentable evidence to support masking or unmasking, that under the due process of law, all parents and students should be afforded the unalienable right to make their own decisions and choices. Our country was founded upon many great principles, but order and separation of power have to be the most important of those principles, and it is time that the Rockwood School District stop disobeying those principles. I urge you to consider the facts I have presented in your decision tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Derek Pratt. And after Derek Pratt is Brad Krone.
Wordsmithing with my friend Kim. Here sits a school board who forgot they work for the people. They stole our God-given freedoms in order to control like sheeple. And although we are tired, we stay in this fight, because in the end, we know the truth will come to light. So here we are again for another meeting. For some, this is a great interruption. We'd rather be with our families than calling you out on your corruption. But you leave us no choice, as your crimes run deep. How do you look at yourselves in the mirror? How do you sleep? We give you information one week after another, although it seems to go in one ear and rip back out the other. But money is a great motivator. It has revealed true character through the ages. Now we clearly see who sacrificed: children for wages. Do you choose not to know, or are you bought? Is the subject of our chatter, but as each week passes, we are inclined to believe the latter. Because choosing not to know is certainly no excuse, it leaves us only to wonder: are you abstained, or just obtuse? Masks don't stop a virus, by science's own admission. They only serve to fulfill the goal of psychological submission. You're depriving children of oxygen, forcing them to rebreathe their own bacteria. A virus with over 99% survival rate doesn't warrant this kind of hysteria. You ignore kids who have been exposed and recovered, which is mostly in the community. If you follow the true science, you know nothing trumps natural immunity. And Tim Ricker, erasing years of struggle fought by many in this nation. Congratulations, you must be proud. You've brought back segregation. You're punishing kids for taking a stand and using critical thoughts. I guess it makes sense, as your lack of character shows how easily you're bought. This is not about a virus, there is much bigger goal. It's about enslaving the population and keeping everyone under control. Your cognitive dissonance is really getting old. You surrendered your soul for the lies you have been sold. You listen to the CDC and the WHO, and who are partially funded by Gates, a man whose goal is depopulation and getting rid of people he hates. An evil Fauci so filled with his own vanity, we know one day he will be charged with crimes against humanity. For those who vote for mandates and make tyrannical demands, rest assured you'll be held accountable. You will have blood on your hands.
Next speaker is Brad Krone. And after Brad is Gavin Krone.
I apologize my rhyme. I am in my 23rd year in the classroom, in a neighboring district. I've taught, I estimate, around 2,000 students at this point in my career. Connectedness is everything. I'm not going to sit here and argue about, and even try to make a case legality, I'll let others who've studied that more, or the data, which has been discussed already. I want to talk about connectedness. So I received training recently on how to connect with LGBTQ students. I received training on how to make sure I connect with all races, all ethnicities, all people groups who come into my classroom. And I walk into my classroom, and I see this all over, and I'm not connecting. In fact, I see students in the hallway, and I know I know them. I know I had them two years ago. I can see it in their eyes. I can't for the life of me think of their name now. I hate that. That drives me crazy. The number of students I've seen this year that I've said, "Give me five seconds." I try to go, and then sometimes I say, "I can't come up with it." I can't come up with it, because I can't see their face. And I wish their eyes were enough, but it's not. So here I am. Sorry, I'm emotional. I spent two years as a pastor, a long time ago, in the 90s. I became a teacher because I loved to teach, and the only thing I did in pastoring that I liked was teach. Everything else I didn't like. No crisis of faith, I became a teacher. I love to teach what I teach. These last two years, only years I've ever come home and said, "I don't like it." And it's because of this. I didn't think I was going to cry when I did this. I know my wife hurts for me, because I see kids who aren't talking to each other, who aren't interacting, and I talk with other teachers, and I don't know if they'll get up and say it or not, but students aren't talking to each other in the classroom. I have to tell them every single time I create a cooperative activity to talk to each other. You can talk to each other. The virtual learning that they did before, the distance desks, we're fighting that every step of the way. So I'm in the fight. I'll keep going, but I don't know. It stays.
Next speaker, Gavin Krone. After Gavin, Stephen Tate. Mr. Krone, you forgot your glasses, and I think your son may have them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gavin Krone, and I'm currently a senior at Lafayette. One of the things I want to talk about today is masks and my experience at school with them. So at the beginning of the year, when I learned that we weren't having to wear masks, I was not excited at all whatsoever. And when I was walking the halls, I noticed that kids were wearing a mask like this, and it just didn't make sense to me. And when I heard about the court case about how masks are unconstitutional, after the day that court case went, I walked into school without a mask on. Within minutes, I was talked to, and they asked me a bunch of questions and stuff, and I got pulled over. And then one of the questions I asked them is, "What is the difference between me wearing a mask like this and not wearing one at all?" And the principal said, "Well, at least there's an attempt." At least there is an effort. That made no sense to me. Like, it just didn't make any sense. Where was it? So if the Rockwood School District is letting kids wear masks improperly, like I am wearing one right now in school, because I can get throughout the whole day wearing a mask like this at school, no teacher, nobody says anything to me, that is no different than from wearing a mask, what's not wearing a mask at all. And I'm not just fighting for myself, I'm fighting for the middle school kids, the Rockwood school kids, or the elementary school kids, who don't have their voice, who are being forced to wear these and don't have their own voice, and it's so mental, and that is such abuse, Rockwood, and you need to get control of that. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, Stephen Tate, and after that, Matthew Wind.
Hello, my name is Stephen Tate. Obviously, I don't need this microphone, so you can shut it off anytime you don't like what I got to say. Do any of you idiots up there know what hurting children is?
Sir, we're not here to be called names.
Okay, all right. Do any of you up there know what it is to harm a child? Every one of you is doing that right now. There is not one up there that is not doing that. As you can see, there's a lot of people here who are hurt. I'll just turn it that way. I have another word for it, but I'll be nice. My opinion, I think the Attorney General should be here right now. He should be standing here asking his police officers to walk up there and put cuffs on every last one of you. Haul your backsides to Cole County for contempt of court. That is where you belong: in jail. Now, outside of that, I really can't blame you. Honestly, I can't. The people that had a chance to get rid of you, stay at home. They are to blame. But you right now, that think that you're all high and mighty, better than God, you're not. You are... Okay, let's put it this way. I could take all the brain cells, put them all together, go like this, I wouldn't come up with Lent. That's a fact. So shut my mic off, I don't care. I can still talk. I still got time. This is supposed to be a blue-ribbon school, one of the best school districts in the state, right? That's what you all say. Why are these other school districts following the law? There are school districts out there that didn't have one of these stupid things on. And if you think that these work, go to Walgreens. I was there today. I took pictures of several boxes of these masks. Every one of them says they do not work for coronavirus. They don't work for any virus. Go to Walgreens, take a trip. It's right down the street there, there's one right across the street over here. Walk back or pick up a box, read it. I'm certain somebody up there knows how to read. It's a very short thing. If you can't, I'll email it to you if you don't got the time to go. I could do that, too. I think you're all a bunch of waste of time. That's all I got to say.
Next speaker, Matthew Wind, and after that, Logan Biggs.
Hello, my name is Matt Wind. I'm a Rockwood alumni, and a parent, and a scientist. I would like to thank the board for maintaining the policy that has endured so far. It has kept people safe and healthy and in school. The reason we're here is because you're obligated to listen to all the parents and all the members of our community, give their opinions, and speak to you about our policies. The problem with that is, these people aren't qualified to make decisions on the health care of our community. The entire community is affected by the decisions you make. Parents, grandparents, everyone who comes in contact with the students are affected. Community spread is increasing. Don't take chances because people are upset or don't understand what's going on around them. This room is full of ignorance. These people don't know what they're talking about, and it is...
Excuse me. Quiet.
It is pretty sad. You need to do what's best for the people according to the smartest people. The scientists, the experts, people who have worked and earned the respect to control the environment around them, and not people who are scared and ignorant and failed biology. Masks work. The more people wear masks, the less community spread. The less community spread, the less deaths. The less deaths, the less depression amongst our students, the less suicide amongst our students, the less missed events and activities for our students. If you think people are committing suicide because of masks and not because of the 800,000 dead Americans that are their relatives, you are wrong. I'm sorry you're so confused. I wish you would put your effort and your emotion towards helping people and helping the community. You all love your children, just like we do.
That gentleman needs to be removed.
But you don't know what you're doing. Take a science class.
No, he's not. I'm asking him to be removed. I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Wind, that this crowd cannot allow someone to speak.
I am talking about you. Read a science book.
Excuse me. We are going to stop right here for a five-minute recess. We will come back, and we will continue this meeting if we can have people be respectful, like our student mentioned earlier, and show love and respect. While a speaker is speaking, they are allowed to speak. Five-minute recess, and we will return. Okay, we are ready to resume our meeting now after the five-minute recess. If everybody could please take their seats so that we can continue.
How much time do we have left?
Yep, 10. 10. All right, we are ready to resume where we were. Mr. Wind, you may continue with your comments. If we need to take another recess, we may be asking more people to leave the room so that we can get to all of our agenda items this evening. We have a very full agenda of business for the district, and that is the point of us being here. Please show respect to the speakers while they are speaking, and keep your comments to yourselves so that we can continue. We have 10 minutes left for patron comments. Thank you.
Listen to scientists, listen to experts, stop listening to zealots.
Next speaker is Logan Biggs, and after that, Lori Gruffin.
Board of Education, you don't know me personally, but I'm a student in the Rockwood School District, a member of the same student body that each of you took your oath to protect and help when you got elected to your positions. It's for this reason alone I must urge you to reject the new Rockwood Safe Together Plan. I know that you're under a lot of pressure right now to appease the screaming mobs of parents and students that decry the use of face masks and close-contact quarantine. Therefore, I must humbly but strongly request that you stand firm in the use of the methods that have kept me, my family, my teachers, and my fellow students safe these last two years. We've seen firsthand what this horrible virus can do to us. We've seen many members of our community, our district, and our schools pass away, and just the other day, one of your own principals passed away, and multiple people at Eureka High School have contracted COVID recently. Taking the masks off now would be putting everyone at risk of COVID and disrupting their education or putting them in the hospital. Ten children have died of COVID in Missouri alone, and I hope that Rockwood School District wants to do everything in their power to not add to that list. I know that the topic of the Attorney General's letter and the Cole County Court case has and will continue to come up tonight, but it's been shown that these orders have little to no effect on schools and private businesses. Just this morning, Tim Lomar, a prosecutor in St. Charles, said to a city councilman, quote, "I'm going to give you my honest opinion, politics aside. The Attorney General has no authority over the local school boards. I ask the board to not give in to the empty hollow threats of the Attorney General that others may have you try to perceive as important." You said it yourself in the email about the proposed plan. Our mitigation strategies over the past year have served us well, as we have seen with very little transmission in our schools. If the mitigation plan has protected us for this long, there should be absolutely no reason to go back on these strategies that have protected me until the coronavirus has been adequately dealt with or goes away entirely. Just... Yeah, I am entitled to speak. Just yesterday, we received two emails about COVID-positive students in LaSalle Springs Middle and Eureka High. So are we now just supposed to be left in the unknown during a pandemic? Are we just supposed to trust those around us to self-quarantine when they refuse to even wear a piece of cloth over their face? Having no symptoms is not a sign of not having COVID. People can have COVID and be asymptomatic and spread this disease to their classmates. With the proposed plan, these people could walk around the school and spread a dangerous, life-threatening virus to people in our schools, and with this proposed plan, you would be powerless to stop super-spreader events. Many people who are at risk, even with the masks, will not be able to continue their jobs or their education if these new rules are implemented. Your job as board members is to make sure that everyone in the district is able to do their job or pursue their education. Changing these rules is in direct opposition to everything you should stand for. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori Gruffin, and after that, Mary White.
Hi, my name is Lori. I want to thank everybody for their opinions today and for expressing how they feel. I know there's some strong feelings associated with the subject. I'm a registered nurse. I've been a registered nurse for 12 years. I'm also the mother of two wonderful children. I'm here to speak with you regarding the proposed changes to the masking policy. There are some things that cannot be explained until they are personally experienced. I could never fully and accurately describe the experience of being a mother or nurse. Every day is an adventure, a unique journey, a learning experience, full of feelings, hopes, and fears. My best friend is an ICU nurse who has worked the front lines of COVID since the beginning of the pandemic, starting in New York. He has a good friend on a ventilator in Michigan. We are unsure of his prognosis. He is 30 years old. I have multiple friends in the healthcare field, and I believe there is consensus amongst most healthcare professionals, especially those in direct contact with COVID patients. This virus scares us. This has been a battlefield, not only amongst the virus itself, but with friends, family, and the public, political figures who refuse to acknowledge the severity and reality of this illness, those whose ideology that seeks to elevate ego above welfare, especially to our children, and we're seeking political advancement and attention comes before human decency, those who believe that just because you cannot see the outcomes of harm and risk you expose to others means that you did not cause this harm, nor should you be burdened with the worry of others. I, as well as many others on the front lines and in families who have been affected, can attest to the suffering this illness causes. The stories are out there. I will spare the details of this gruesome disease, but I will share my personal experience, that we have not, in recent times, with all of our modern medicine and technology, experienced the mass amount of death and felt such helplessness and defeat as we have with COVID. I will only speak on the simple mitigation strategies that have proven very effective since the beginning of the pandemic, such as masking. Countless studies have proven the effectiveness and safety of wearing a mask, results which are further exemplified... Excuse me. ...by incorporation of other basic mitigation strategies. These are minor inconveniences, which benefits far outweigh any possible risk and save countless lives. Our responsibility as parents and caretakers are to protect those who are vulnerable, our children. They are unable to understand the complexity of our situation and what decisions prove to provide the best outcomes of their health and health of their family members. Over 700 children, ages zero to 18, have died of COVID in the USA since January of 2020. If this had been a single instance where 700 children had died all at once, it would be incomprehensible. I hope that you...
Thank you. Thank you. Our final speaker for this evening will be Mary White.
Good evening, Dr. Ricker and esteemed board members. My name is Mary White, and I am the orchestra director at Eureka High School. I've been a proud member of the school district for 44 years, from the day I entered kindergarten until the day I stand before you right here. I love this district, I love my school, I love my job, and I don't have enough words to express to you how much I love my students. But I'm almost 50 years old, and I have three pre-existing health conditions that make me extremely high-risk for COVID-related death. I am vaccinated, and I've received the booster, but my primary care physician warns me of the great possibility that I would not survive contracting COVID. The Rockwood Safe Together Plan has made it possible for me to continue to do my jobs safely through this pandemic. I currently teach 138 students, and I would do whatever I had to to keep them safe and healthy. In fact, over 10 years ago, I learned how to tie an extension cord around the hinge to my classroom door to keep out a potential intruder. I also learned how to jimmy a chair in the door so that in case the extension cord failed, I could keep an intruder out. I learned how to teach my students to hide and how to protect themselves by throwing staplers and books, because I needed to keep them safe. I did what you asked, and I continue to do those things because I love my students. Today, we are faced with a daily deadly threat: COVID-19. It won't kill everyone, but it'll kill some of us. In fact, according to Education Week magazine, 414 active teachers in the United States have died from COVID. You have two tools at your access that you can use to keep students and staff safe: masks and vaccines. Requiring vaccination at this point is difficult for many reasons, but requiring masks is not. It requires you to stand up to the bullying and the negativity and say, "We must protect our people." The changes proposed in the new plan are at best reckless and at worst deadly. I'm asking the board to vote down the current proposal and consider these items. A high-risk staff member should never be in a classroom with unmasked students, a huge percentage of whom are unvaccinated. One student with asymptomatic COVID could literally kill me. Unmasking students in my classroom means that I either have to risk my life to teach or leave my job. If you cannot agree to a district-wide continuation of masking, I ask that a clause be included in the proposal allowing high-risk staff members to require masks in their individual classrooms. The new proposal has masks recommended happening the day after winter break, after people have traveled and gathered in large groups. Allowing a two-week-period buffering zone between the vacation and any attempt to unmask would be wise. The 4% infection rate is way too high. In my building, that would mean 80 people have to be sick before we take any action. I understand the stress and negativity and sheer exhaustion you're experiencing, but those of us in your classrooms experience every day. Please think about your people. Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to superintendent and board comments. Dr. Ricker?
Thank you, Mrs. Baze. As was mentioned earlier by Mrs. Baze, we lost a valued member of our Rockwood staff, Assistant Principal Carl Hudson from Marquette High School. Carl worked in the district since 2010 and touched the lives of countless students and colleagues at Marquette. Our district, and especially the Marquette community, has experienced tremendous loss in a short amount of time. We stand ready to offer counseling support and necessary for all of our... Anything necessary for all of our students and staff in the coming days, as we started that this morning. This is and will be a very difficult time for all of us. Please join us in expressing our deepest sympathy to Carl's family, colleagues, and friends, as well as the students at Marquette. Let's do all we can do and all we can find a way to heal through the loss of our teammate, mentor, and friend. This evening, the Board of Education approved a new addition to our district administrative team: Kathy Shoup as the new Activities Director at Marquette High School. She replaces Shane Matson, who is retiring at the end of the year and will begin her new position on July 1. Currently, Kathy is Activities Director at Willard High School near Springfield. Currently, Kathy is Activities Director at Willard High School near Springfield, a position she has held since 2017. Kathy also served as Activities Director at Rollah High, Assistant Activities Director at Buffalo High, and also served as a teacher in basketball, cross-country, track and field, and golf coach at Buffalo. At Willard, she was the recipient of the 2021 Missouri Association of Rural Outstanding Educator Administrators of the Year Award. Kathy earned her bachelor's degree in Phys Ed from Culver Stockton, a Master's of Science and Physical Education from Pittsburgh State, and a Master's of Education and Athletic Administration, and a Specialist of Education Administration from William Woods. Kathy could not be here with us this evening. Obviously, it's quite a ways away from Willard, but please help me congratulate her, and we can show her the tape if you'll give her a round of applause. As we head toward winter break, I want to take a moment to wish the entire Rockwood community a wonderful holiday season and a very happy new year. I'm honored to serve as the Rockwood Superintendent, and I am reminded every day of how special this community is. On behalf of my wife, our three grown children and their spouses, plus my 10 grandchildren here in St. Louis and Minnesota, I wish all of you a happy holiday and a great new year. And that concludes my comments.
Any board comments?
On December 6th, I attended the Special School District Governing Council meeting at that, via Zoom, and at that meeting, we looked at the current CSAT plan and previewed the strategic plan that will go into effect on July 1. Special School District is doing great things, and I am so grateful for the partnership we have together. I, it's an honor to serve on the governing council.
Any other board comments?
Yes. I had the pleasure last week to attend one of my three grandsons' choral concerts at Rockwood Valley Middle School. It was a wonderful, it was a wonderful night. It was fairly short, 45 minutes, but they sang tremendous songs. The parents all were masked, students were all masked, had a nice time, and I thought it was also nice that at the end, they asked us if we would take the chairs we were sitting in and put those back so the custodians didn't have to. So it was a great night, and if you get a chance to go to some of the concerts, choral, band, anything in your, in your schools, please take that chance. That's, you see your children, grandchildren, in action, and that's all we're here for, to see them thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? The only other comment I wanted to make was on behalf of the board, we have received a large number of emails over the last couple of weeks, and so we just wanted to acknowledge that we have all received those and read them, and we appreciate your input and feedback and opinions. And you're always welcome to do that if you weren't able to give your patron comment this evening, or if you weren't going to have enough time to get that stated. So we always accept those emails. Thank you. Next, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we have two donations this time. Great donations again. Commerce Bank Shares Foundation, I don't, I'm sure this is not their first, first donation. They have donated $1,500 to the Smoky Mountain Adventure to provide scholarship for students to attend the Smoky Mountains Adventure trips during the 2021, 2022 school year. And the second one is from Babler Elementary, from the elementary PTO, $12,000 proceeds for fundraising, from fundraising to assist Babler and to provide financial assistance from fundraising to purchase a new school marquee at Babler Elementary. Thank you for those donations very much.
Thank you for reading those, Dr. Kinder. Any other discussion items for consent? The motion is to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, we have on our agenda, could I please have a motion to accept the 2020/21 audit report, post-audit report, and Secretary of the Board report as presented?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. For discussion, we welcome Paul Norrington, Brittany Wolfman, and instead, it's going to be Dan Steinberg. Hi, Dan.
So tonight, we have a couple of financial agenda items, first one being the completion of the 2021 audit. We work, school districts are required to have an audit from an external accounting firm. We engage with Kerber Akkenbrekel. They've been doing the audit for the last couple of years. And tonight, Brittany Wolfrem, she served as the manager on the engagement. Her and her team spent some time with us since June all the way through October to take a look at the 2021, and tonight, she has a quick presentation to provide the outcome of the, the audit. So I'll turn it over to Brittany.
As Dan said, I'm Brittany Wolfrem. I was the manager on this audit, and I just kind of wanted to go over the results. So as part of our audit, we give three major opinions. The first one is over the financial statements of the district. It's management's responsibility to prepare these statements, and it's our job to express opinion on the fair presentation of them. We perform our audit in accordance with three different standards: generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and uniform guidance. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion. This is one of three opinions, and this is the best opinion, meaning we noted no issues during our audit. During our audit, we also test internal controls of our financial reporting. We do not opine on the internal controls. However, during our testing, we noted no material weaknesses and no issues. We also test compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants, and we noted no instances of non-compliance. Our second opinion that we give is over federal awards. So all the federal expenditures that the district spends, we test at least 20% of them. We did this by testing three different major programs. Two of them relate to the two new COVID grants. One was the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and the second was the Education Stabilization Fund. This consists of S.R. I funds, and then the GEAR or Transportation Supplement Funds. And then the third grant we tested was the FEMA Grant. With all three of these programs, we noted no issues. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which again is the best opinion that you can have. We did test internal control over these major programs as well, and noted no issues. And then the third and final opinion that we give is over state compliance. Missouri requires you to be in compliance with budgetary and disbursement procedures, disclose accurate attendance records, and disclose accurate transportation records. We did, again, issue an unmodified or clean opinion, meaning we noted no issues with state compliance. And then lastly, we are required to communicate a few other things. Significant accounting policies are described in the first note of the financial statements. This discloses the district's basis of accounting. There was no changes in accounting policies this year. The significant estimates in the financial statements relate to the OPEB and pension liability, and these are based on actuarially determined amounts. There were no transactions that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We didn't have any difficulties during our audit, and we had no disagreements with management. We did not detect any financial statement misstatements, and we had no findings during our audit. We did obtain a signed representation letter from management. This letter states that management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements, and they believe that they're accurate and complete. We also noted no management consultations with other independent accountants. And then finally, I just wanted to thank Paul Norrington, Dan Steinberg, and his staff. They did a great job getting us everything we needed for our audit and making it as smooth as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions this evening? Thank you very much for continuing to keep such strict finances and get, keep us in such good standing. We appreciate all the work that you've all done. Thank you. So the motion is to accept the 2020/21 audit report, post-audit report, and Secretary of the Board report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. The next item on the agenda is information only. Paul Norrington is, is up here, and I believe Dan as well, with an update on the budget and S.R. funding update.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're going to begin a discussion to talk about a preliminary budget for the 2223 school year. Yes, we're still in fiscal year '22, but '2223 gets here before we know it, right? So really, this is just an introduction to some of the things that we're looking at in regards to the upcoming budget year that will begin in July 1 of 2022. So tonight's discussion will really focus around our operating funds. As you can see, school districts operate under four funds. We really won't be talking about debt service this evening because the levy for debt service at 68 cents is self-supporting to handle the district's general obligation debt. So really, what we're speaking to this evening will be the operating funds, which entails our general fund for incidental expenses, our special or teachers' revenue fund, and our capital projects fund. And just to kind of give you a little background before Dan gives you the details, this is our typical process and timeline. We typically come to you in December with a first look, but our actual budget process starts right at the beginning of the school year. So we started with our enrollment projections at the end of September, and that kind of starts the whole process. And then from there, we start meeting with our different departments and solicit budget requests during the month of October, get all that put together and compiled. And then from there, in November and into, up to tonight, the administrative team works together to start assembling some of the budget requests and, and put all that together. So this is a culmination of all that work that started back in October. So tonight, we typically provide you with a preliminary look, and then it will be an ongoing process as we move forward through the year. From January to May, we'll get more clarity as far as revenue assumptions and other things of that nature, and continue to refine and tune the budget projections going forward. And in May, we'll come back again with another preliminary projections to give you an update of forecasts that we've seen over the last few months. And then in June, will be the actual final adoption of the budget. We have to adopt a budget by June 30. And typically, we ask for adoption of the budget at our second June board meeting. A couple of things to note. Dan's going to give you the details, but in, within this assumption, the last couple of years, the district has, has really been fortunate in that our fund balances have, have increased more than we projected, and we're sitting in, sitting at a pretty good place. This year, we'll have a little bit of a planned spend-down, but our balances will be well above our board policy targets, and we'll still be in a very good shape. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dan and let him speak to some of the things that we're looking at going forward, and he'll give you a little bit more of a detail. All right? Dan?
Okay, thank you. So just want to spend a few minutes just kind of going through some of the factors that we've included in our first look at the 2223 school year. So first, with enrollment, each September kind of starts our process. So this is just a quick recap of our enrollment counts that we report to the state in September. So you can see back in the 1920 school year, that's been our high of 20,00912, and we've seen a steady decline in enrollment. So from, from an enrollment perspective, why we kind of focus on that is because at the state level, our state funding, the basic formula and our Prop C money is dependent on the ADA out of the residential enrollment. So September kind of starts the process of projecting and looking ahead five years for enrollment and kind of get our trends. So we are looking at a steady, a little bit of a decline over the next couple of years, where next year, we will lose about 130 kids. What's happening is that we're having kids move in through elementary, so they're coming at the K through 5 level, so we're seeing higher elementary levels. So, so students that have been at the secondary level are starting, the higher grades are starting to move out, so that transition's starting to take place. So eventually, if our enrollment at the elementary level will make its way through the system, we'll, we'll see a steady, a steady pace of our enrollment. So, so from a source standpoint, just a comparison of what our adopted budget was compared to where we are currently looking, so we're six months into the fiscal year. We have a little more clarity from a, a local standpoint. We set our tax rate back in September. This was a reassessment year. We have a couple of bullet points of what, or kind of a recap of what that was related to. We picked up about 2.4 million in revenue, about a 1% variance from our adopted budget. And then looking at next year, which we'll kind of focus on our local revenue, state revenue, we're picking up about, at least projecting about 2.5 million increase, was, which again is just about a 1% increase in our revenue. So since, since September, we have provided some updates to the board on what our current school year looks like, our 2122 update of revenue, any increase in our local taxes with the reassessment. We had about a 5.9% increase in AV, if you remember, from September. We were limited to CPI 1.4, so we had just about a small increase, about 200,000 in local taxes. We're seeing a better return on our Prop C, just with the local economy and the sales tax return based off of our ADA. From a commercial standpoint, we're seeing an increase in the manufacturing and merchant surtax. That increase in the local taxes is being offset by our state revenue. So our ADA numbers that we'll get into in a couple of minutes here was less than what we originally budgeted. So our 1.2 million increase in local taxes was offset by about a half million decrease in state revenue. And from a federal standpoint, all our, all our federal programs are constant. We are expecting an increase in funding from the S.R. II and S.R. III, which we'll talk to at the end of the presentation. But basically, any increase in those fundings is a direct offset to expenditures because they are reimbursable grants. So we have the increase in the revenue, we also have the increase in the expenditures. So from a 2223, so if I kind of shift years, look at next year, these are some of the factors that we built into when we look at next year. So even years, even calendar years are non-reassessment years, so we typically see a smaller increase in local tax revenue. So we are building in a 1.25% increase in assessed valuation. You can kind of see we're at the higher part of our trend of what we've had the last three non-reassessment years. Our Prop C money, again, we are seeing, based on information from DESI and some of the financial reports that are coming from the state, Prop C continues to improve. So we are seeing a 6.3% increase in Prop C money. So we have a slide that kind of summarizes that factor. And then again, state revenue is, looks like it's going to be relatively flat. The one funding piece of that, excuse me, that will impact that is our residential enrollment. So we have a slide that kind of summarizes what we expect for next year on that. So again, local property taxes, a non-reassessment year, we're expecting a 1.25% increase, which equals to about 2.6 million increase in local funding. Tax rate will roughly increase about a penny, but that will fluctuate once we kind of get our final numbers, which we will not receive until September of next year. So we'll come in, the end of September to set the, to set the, excuse me, set the tax rate. So between now and then, we'll have little information from the, from the local assessor. Basic formula, if you recall, there are four main factors with our formula. Three of them are controlled at the state level. That's our funding levels with the state adequacy target, our dollar value modifier and appropriation rate. All those factors are expected to remain the same as they are this year, so there's no change from a funding standpoint at the state level. The one piece that will impact it again, as I kind of mentioned at the beginning with enrollment, is that our residential enrollment is decreasing, so we're going to expect about a $3 million decrease in our state funding, and that's a factor of, the, the state allows districts to use the highest of the two previous ADAs or the current year. So we've been able to utilize the 1920 ADA, because that's been the highest of the two previous years, but next year, that falls off. So the 2122, the current school year, right now is projected to the highest. So as you can kind of see, we're, we're dropping about 420 points on there, which equates to a $3 million decrease in state revenue. Again, sales tax is strong. Our amount per WADA, the weighted average daily attendance, we're expecting a 6% increase, but any increase related to that amount is being offset by the decrease in the, the WADA, the residential membership, which is just directly related to less kids. the residential membership, which is just directly related to less kids walking through the building. It's a quick graph, just kind of showing the source of the funding as a percentage, 79% from local taxes, with state coming in at 17%. And you see we have 4% coming from county and other sources. In regards to local revenue, our local assessed taxes is the largest contributor to our operating funds of about 85%. Next is sales tax at 10%, and we're roughly getting about 20 million that's passed through the state on those funds. As Paul kind of mentioned, the budget process does start in September, once school gets going. We've asked all the departments to submit their requests. School budgets are based on a formula per pupil, and then we get together and kind of provide the initial target and make adjustments that kind of align with what our estimated revenues are. This is an ongoing process. This is just our first look at it. It's our first presentation of what it looks like for next year. As Paul mentioned, it will change between now and May, but we will constantly provide updates. Any kind of significant changes will be provided to you. Overall, from an operating budget recap, for this year, we are expecting about a $2 million increase in our fund balance. And as Paul mentioned, with the expected target of a $3 million decrease in our fund balance for next year, our fund balance percentage is at 26% for next year. So that's our target for next year, what we're looking at, above the 22% board targets. This is just a quick summary of the last five years of our fund balance. You can kind of see that it wasn't too long ago that we were kind of hovering right around the 22%. And then we've been able to pick up that the last couple of years, and then looking at a 26% fund balance, looking at for 22-23 school year. So just our financial outlook. Again, this is just kind of the initial review of the budget. We'll come back in June with a final budget presentation. We look at a fund balance policy of the 22%. The district was recently reaffirmed with a AAA rating from S&amp;P. That was done back in November with the sale of the refunding bonds. But we're going to continue to monitor our local tax collection. We'll continue to work with the transition of the debt service levy plan, and then also align our goals, long-term plan with the way forward. And shift gears to an update on our ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding. So these were the fundings that were established through federal legislation over the last two years. These are one-time federal funds, and the ESER 2 and ESER 3 is broken out of two different legislations at the federal level. These are anything, any budget items, any kind of requests, we follow the guidelines established by DESI. And as Brittany mentioned in the audit, they're also subject to review by the external auditors, so they also go through their process as well. So over a three-year period, to cover costs which are defined by DESI, excuse me, we have an allocation between the two funds of 11.3 million, and we'll provide a quick update on those. So ESER 2, that's kind of the first bucket of money of 3.5 funding available. So that's for funds available through September 30 of 2023. The funds have been appropriated by the state legislation, and we've received approval to allocate 3 million of our allocation to address five categories. You can kind of see there the breakdown of those items, and we have about 500,000 reserved that will cover us for the next year. So anything that we, any kind of changes we make, this is a fluid process with DESI, similar to what we'll talk about in ESER 3. We have the ability to make constant revisions to the budget with DESI based on our needs at that time. So ESER 3, this is the largest of the allocation, 7.8 million. This is for obligations through September 30 of 2024. The funds currently have not been appropriated by state legislation, and the guidelines that we have to follow are listed there. We've met all the guidelines that the state has asked for us to do. Our budget application was submitted on time and also subsequently approved by DESI on November 15th. And again, that's going to be a constant process. We're going to continue to get feedback and provide updates and work with DESI to make any kind of changes. So as part of the original ESER 3, there was a survey sent out. We have a couple of quick slides. This just shows we had about 3,300 respondents. Majority category was in the parent guardian category. As part of the survey, we had five categories, and you can kind of see that based on the ranking, it was pretty fluid throughout the preferences of where the district should target that. And again, this is just feedback that we're utilizing to kind of build on the feed, to build on the plan to use these funds. These funds are to be used through September 30 of 2024. So again, here's just a quick breakdown of the 7.8 million. Since the funds have not been directly allocated by the state yet, we have less money that's been allocated. Majority, essentially all of it, 1.4 million of the 1.9, has been addressed through accelerated learning. So we do have 20% of our funds that have to be spent to address learning. And with the work with Dr. Willett, we've addressed and put some plans in place and allocated funding for that. So a lot of financial information that's been submitted. So again, this is just to recap, this is kind of our first look at FY '23 budget. We'll continue to work and provide updates, and as things change, we'll notify you. Happy to take any questions.
Dan, you keep talking about, you had a lot of questions about the ESER funds. Those are federal funds, is that right?
Correct.
How many years have we been accepting ESER funds?
So we just received allocation on the ESER 2 specifically, ESER 2 and ESER 3. They were just passed into legislation in December of '20. ESER 2 was December of '20, ESER 3 was March of '21. So we're just recently getting our allocations within the past six to nine months.
Yeah, I've received emails in the past and continue to receive emails, and people have come to the board meetings and questioned the use of ESER funds, not the use, but how we got those funds. There in essence, some, the ones I've read directed to the school board are that the only reason we're requiring mask is so that we can get ESER funds. That's not true, is it?
Correct.
Because if that was true, then all the schools in Franklin County and Jefferson County and St. Charles County, they wouldn't be getting any funds, would they?
Correct.
And that ESER is pretty high, 7 to 11 million?
Yeah, there's 529 school districts in Missouri, and the guidelines that DESI and the federal legislation has outlined applies to all 500-plus school.
Nothing to do about mask wearing, is there?
No mandates related to mask.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm sorry, this is the board's meeting at this time. We're done with patron comments. Sir, you're going to have to leave the meeting if you can't. Stay quiet. I'm sorry. It's time, it's time. Sir, it's time for you to go. I'm asking you to leave the meeting. You're disruptive of the entire board's business meeting. This isn't your meeting, this is the board's meeting. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I apologize, Dan and Dr. Kinder. Dr. Kinder, are your questions all answered?
That was all my questions for that one.
Any other questions?
So Dan, I do have a question. Do we have any idea when DESI will release the funds for ESER 3?
So they're, excuse me, so they're required by March of '22 to appropriate the funds. So we won't know until they enter legislation and work through that, but March, at some point in March is their deadline.
Paul is, or excuse me, Dan, or Paul. We're hearing rumblings in the news that the legislation or legislators may not appropriate the ESER 3 monies. Is that, is that what we're hearing?
That's correct, that's what we're hearing, yes.
So it is then not related to anything other than what's in the statute and anything that's directly related into the requirements for DESI?
Correct, yeah.
But the legislature still has a responsibility to appropriate that money?
That's correct. And just to give a comparison, for the ESER 2 allocation, that was approved in the December of '20, federal legislation that was passed, appropriation wasn't complete until October on there. So, you know, it's following kind of a consistent timeline from a legislation standpoint.
So Dan, looking at your slide on ESER 3 overview, what you have, the bullet points there, that is what we're required are acceptable terms for using ESER funds, is that correct?
So those are the main categories, correct, that are outlined. Obviously, there's bullet points within those, but those are very high-level categories that ESER 3 provides the guidelines on. And again, the only, the only percentage that is required through ESER 3 is on the accelerated learning. So there's a 20% requirement that has to be allocated out of the 7.8, and that's roughly
Dan, can you explain how the dollar figure came about from ESER monies?
The allocation from the state?
Yes. Why we had seven, others got 40 million, some got less than us.
Yeah, there's multiple factors, yeah. One of them being the free reduced in Title I allocation. So it kind of followed a similar calculation tool that they use for title funds.
So basically, it's based on poverty?
Any other questions for Dan? All right, thank you both.
All right.
Very much.
Thank you.
Next, could I please have a motion to approve the bond issue purchases and related contracts, 7,500 to 150,000 as submitted?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Yes, we have a couple this evening. The first one is to Civil Engineering Design Consultants, CDC. There are civil engineers, and this is for civil engineering services for this summer for the front part of the Babler parking area. If you recall, last summer, we did the rear area with the loop around Babler. This will complete the rest of the parking area at Babler, and that work will be performed this summer. The estimate on that is 28,100, including out-of-pocket reimbursable expenses. And the second one is for Spencer Contracting for 29,600, and that is for replacement of various deteriorating sidewalk sections at multiple locations. You can see down below some of the locations that we're addressing. Ellisville, Ridge Meadows, UTOF, Rockwood Valley and Rockwood Summit. District received three bids, Spencer was the low bid. We built in some allowance in the event that we run into some additional sidewalk areas that need to be addressed while we're doing that, and that'll also be a project this Any questions?
All right, so the motion is to approve the bond issue purchases and related contracts, 7,500 to 150,000 as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you, Paul. Next, we invite Mary LaPac, and I believe Mr. Rick Nobles up to talk to us with some information about the 2021 telephone survey presentation.
Good evening. As you know, the end of November, beginning of December, we had a community survey to help gauge support for the district in general, and then more specifically for a potential ballot issue in April. And we have Mr. Rick Nobles from Excellence K-12, who conducted the survey, to present the top-level results.
Good evening, and thank you for having me on the agenda. I'm going to refer to the data overview that you received on December the 10th. We start the telephone survey with a series of questions that people don't need to have an intimate knowledge of school districts to have an opinion about, such as technology, value for the tax dollar spent, thinking about those types of issues. Your grades were terrific. Quality of the school facilities was at 4.54, and they go down to 4.21, probably in the top three of school districts that we have worked with in the last five years on that. So terrific grades. We asked people if the district were to put forth a ballot initiative in 2022, how likely would they be to vote? 92% said they would vote. If you do have that, it'll be a miracle, but it shows the passion that people have and the intentions that they have to participate in the process. How strongly would they support a 54 cent no-tax increase via in-district levy transfer? Strongly support at 30%, support at 23% for a total of 53%. Opposed at 8%, strongly opposed at 19% for a total of 27% with 21% undecided. We then asked how often people read information about the school district read or listened to or watched information. 38% said daily, 26% said weekly, 29% said monthly. Again, those numbers are really very high. And then we did the demographics to ascertain how long people had lived in the district, what age group they were in, did they have children? And all of that information will be in your digital dashboard, which will be coming to you the first week in January. You'll be able to slice and dice that data any number of ways. So that's the telephone survey. We also did three companion surveys that were online surveys to parents, staff and community. And the thing that I would point out with online surveys, first, I would point out that the margin of error is 50%. So take that into consideration anytime you do an online survey. The audiences, in comparing grades versus the telephone survey, the parents' survey was lower, the community survey was lower, the staff survey was about the same. And I would point out that only, in the community survey, only 74 people chose to take part in that. So little, little hard to give that a whole lot of credence with such a small number of people. 420 parents took it, so that would give you a little better indication of how the parents were feeling. And then in just looking at the question about supporting the no-tax increase ballot issue, parents were at 48% with 31% opposed, staff was at 69%, much higher than the general public in the phone survey, 12% opposed, and the community was at 38% with 40% opposed.
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, could I please have a motion to approve the resolution expressing support and approval of the superintendent's revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan as presented?
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Dr. Ricker?
Yeah, here we go. Okay, thanks, Bob. Well, there we go. Before we get started in the proposal, I'd like to thank everybody, specifically the student, staff, administration and parents for their patience over the last two years, at least from July on with myself, and as it relates to the various plans that have been implemented concerning COVID. So I want to remind everybody that all of the plans that have been implemented over the last two and a half years had some overarching themes, and the overarching themes are to keep students and staff healthy and safe, so that students could be face-to-face in their educational settings, and that was more as of last year, and to be able to stretch. and to be able to strategically change our plans and meet the continuing needs related to COVID, and be mindful that this is not over, and we'll need to look at other measures as the new variables confront us. So we'd like to share this proposal to the board for discussion, and if they want to amend parts of it, or they feel the need to do that, that is obviously their purview, and they're able to do that. So, a little background, we've been working with Ed Plus, our working group, for over two years, and you can find the names of those individuals on our resource section of the Rockwood Safe Together Plan. They're representative of Cardinal Glennon, WashU, Children's, Mercy, the Health Department, infectious disease, pediatricians, six or seven superintendents, and they've been working for over two and a half years to consult with and give information to the, basically, the St. Louis schools and school districts. So because we've been working since August 4th, at that point, most, all 23 school districts in the St. Louis County did the same thing. They provided a mask situation, they provided quarantine situations, they followed various organizations, and they put their plans together, and we, and basically, we've stuck together. For us, we've updated our plans every two weeks. In late October, all of us started to think about what the future had to hold, and we had to come up to begin to look at our numbers, and we began to discuss options, maybe, for an exit plan. And we really kind of signaled some of that here in the Rockwood School District with our PTOs and our administrative teams, and even the answering of emails when people said, "When are you going to stop? When's this going to be over?" We talked about looking at a longer or shorter-term process that related to holiday seasons and looking into the beginning of the year. But we really think, in terms of the data that we've collected on our students and our staff, because many people argue that they don't want to see data from other entities other than our locations, we believe that we have the authority based on the communicable disease policies that we have and the revised, these two revised statutes and others. And that's something that we've been very adamant about and been consulted with and advised by our attorneys and other attorneys in the St. Louis region as well. So as we did a thorough analysis and study, we were going to propose these, this proposal for you to consider, and a revised plan, and then the resolution for the second half of the year. The plan has been vetted, again, by our legal counsel and by our administrative team. We've asked our employee groups, we've signaled to them as well that things could be changing, but we wanted to make sure that we did it appropriately. And I think the thing that I want to talk a little bit about is change, and let's talk about a district our size. It's like a cruise ship, and if you've ever been on a cruise ship, they don't move quickly, they don't move left or right very quickly, they leave the dock, and, but they get there where, they get where they need to go. They're not like a cigarette boat. And our district with 20,000 students and basically 4,000 employees, 150 square miles, and four quadrants, it takes time to get things done, and you just can't pull the Band-Aid off and expect things to happen without having some chaos. So we decided to exchange information back and forth, and we want to look at a pre-K through 12 school system and ancillary services all together, not some and not, and leaving others out. So we also have been giving, as you all know, changing information from the state, the county, health agencies, and other entities that have forced us to really look internal and adjust our situation and adjust our students. So many of the other school districts have this week met with their boards of education, proposed their plans. Two weeks ago, we kind of all started with the same kind of look of a plan, and then, as they met with their boards, we all agreed that if things could change individually with your individual school district. So before, when we started, we tried to stick together and keep the same plan. Now we're at more of a strategic, or if you will, surgical plan for your school district based on your variables. So what we do know about these changes are that they're resource hungry and that it takes time. So we'll show you this evening what we think to be not necessarily the best proposal, but a proposal to start the discussion with. So we have some overarching primary objective of the plan, and it's to lessen mitigation strategies and move forward to a more traditional setting, keeping our students, staff, healthy and safe in school. So our team, as we looked at this plan, we wanted to look at some of the goals that we've used, and we've kept some, and we've added some new. So we're, again, we want to provide in-person, high-quality education for our students five days a week. So we're not interested in online learning as the major educational strategy. Again, we want to keep healthy students in our school, and we highly recommend mask-wearing from the winter break on, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means. And we want to effectively address individual school needs as they present themselves. You know, we're a big district, and what happens in one quadrant or one school doesn't necessarily happen in another, but we want to be stealth enough to be able to make the changes that we need to do to protect our children and keep that educational, and our employees, I should say, and keep that educational progress going. So one of the considerations that we have to follow, based on federal requirements, is the masking on public transportation, our buses, and that we will and have already taken into consideration as of a week ago or two weeks ago, working with our working group on the Omicron variant, and whatever challenges that has to provide, we're still learning about that. But we believe that we must be willing to pivot and have measured, if we have measured increase in cases in a school or a building. And I say a building because we're not just talking about our classrooms in our schools, we have other locations that employees work from, transportation, the C Building for maintenance and operations. We just have other locations that we have to be considering as we look at these measures. So here's what's not going to change, at least what we're recommending not to change. We are encouraging people to get vaccinated, and we know that it's voluntary, and we ask that they let us know what, if they're vaccinated or not. We're not mandating vaccines, but we're trying to be responsible partners together so that we know where our students and our staff fit with the vaccines. All the mitigation strategies we've done from the get-go that have been required, we're going to continue, like cleaning, promoting healthy hand hygiene, physical distancing. And we really want the two concepts that have to be encouraged heavily to be part of this plan, which is, if you're sick, stay home. If you're, keep your children home if they're sick. If you're an employee, keep your, stay home. And then we'll collect data and monitoring on all our sites with those indicators on a daily basis. So we've been doing that, and I'll show you a little of that data tonight. So we're going to continue to notify close contacts when we have positive cases, and we will make sure that we have the students wearing their masks on the buses because that's a, that's a federal requirement along with the CDC. Here are some things that are changing. Now, this masks, and the highly recommended, I mean, if people want to say optional, okay, we're recommending it. And we think, you know, we think we have some data that shows that it possibly could work, has worked, and if people want to do that differently with their children, they have, in our plan, they have the opportunity to do that. We initially, on this proposal, put in two dates. We put in January 3rd, and then we put in January 18th. But those were just suggestions, and as we were getting closer to everybody doing their presentations across the region, it looked like more people were going to be using that January 3rd date, so I just left it in there. But really, the board gets, you know, they should talk about this, discuss it, and decide if that's an appropriate date or not. So we also want to give people plenty of time who may want to get vaccinated, or if they have to make other arrangements. I mean, we know that, again, this is a lot of people, and there's a lot of moving parts, but we want to get it out as quickly as we possibly can. Contact tracing under the existing plan, we believe should end on the 23rd. And the reason why the 23rd is because we have, a lot of our students are in activities over the holidays, tournaments, performances, things of that nature. And the Missouri High School Athletic Association really has standards set for those children, and the participation and the things that need to be done to continue to keep them eligible. So we would, we think it just makes sense to just say, okay, we're going to stop the quarantine, contact tracing, modified quarantine, all of those things. The thing that we will be talking, looking at and keeping date on is the positive cases. And if, you know, we want healthy kids to stay in school, but if they are positive, they need to do their 10 days and then, you know, be excluded from school. So we're going to, we're going to follow that, and we're going to highly recommend to the board that that's a really key linchpin to our plan, is if you're sick, if you're a staff member, if you're a student, you stay home. And if you're positive, you stay home for those 10 days. The close contact is really, if we have people who are infected, and we have close-contact individuals that are next to those people, we want to make sure, or we want to find out if they have multiple symptoms, or if they're well. Because we know some students and some employees and some people have been around infected people and never shown sign or been unhealthy, if you will, or asymptomatic. So what we're indicating is that if there is a close contact with multiple symptoms, that you stay home until you either get a physician's diagnosis other than COVID, and we know there are a lot of allergies and other issues, or influenza or other things of that nature, of which we would want you to stay home anyway with the flu. So if you can get a diagnosis other than the COVID, or you can produce a negative COVID test, we consider that available for you to come back to school. And again, we're basing that on those two policies, and the COVID symptoms. And so for our employees, because we heard earlier tonight about various situations that employees are in, we're going to extend the COVID leave through the end of the school year for all of our employee groups. And obviously, if anybody has a need for an accommodation, our human resources people, over the last two years, have been working with people that need accommodations because of a number of reasons, and I won't even go into what those reasons are. But we want to be accommodating, not only to our students for the issues that they might have, but also with our employees. So you've seen these symptoms, and we're talking about multiple symptoms. So if you're just got a little cough, we're not going to be sending kids home saying, you know, "Go to your doctor, get a COVID test." But if there are several of these, and we're going to highly rely on training our administrators and training our nurses to work together to understand what these are and what the ramifications would be if a person has multiple symptoms and what they would need to do. Okay? So here's kind of what we're looking at for positivity rates and exclusion of students. We, as a group, as a St. Louis group, kind of settled on this 4% thing for students and staff in a building. And what we're saying is, and how I kind of came up with a 4% was we looked at some data from CDC, who was using a 4.99% rate as being mild, a mild infection rate, and as it got higher, was more restrictive. So I, I, along with the administrative team, said, "Well, let's be a little more conservative than just 4.99." So we put it on 4, and some of our colleagues in the medical field thought that that was reasonable because it was something that people were used to. But many of the districts across the region have picked other numbers. They've picked 1, 1.5, 2, or, or multiple numbers over a series, if at 2% this happens, if at 4% that happens, so on and so forth. So we needed somewhere to start with you all, so we provided this. Now, regardless of what the number is, the concept is that after two, if a building or a location reaches that threshold, then they will mask up for another two weeks to see where they are and if they can mitigate that infection rate, or if they can get it down. And then, if they can, they can go back to mask-recommended. If they can't, they'll follow it again another week until they can get it down. Now, we don't want to wait till that point in time. We want to be able to say, in this case, if it was, if we saw a location getting to 2%, that we have other mitigation strategies that we might do: coordinating students, spreading students out, doing some different things with classes, not having large gatherings, maybe not allowing visitors to come to the building, maybe waiting on field trips until the rates go. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we're going to talk with our building administrators, because that's what we found was successful when we had some infection rates at some of our elementary schools earlier this year. When they put some of those strategies together, along with masking, it's, the rate went down in about a two-week period of time. So, again, if people have mask exemptions or have ADA accommodations, they'll remain in effect if we return, obviously, to a masking situation in a building. So we continue to do the infection monitoring, the exclusion monitoring. The quarantine issue is really an issue that if, if the Health Department came in and said, "We have these students or these employees we've identified, and we want you to quarantine them," we would collaborate with them, but we're not going to use the same quarantining model that they would use. We're using our infection rate and our exclusion rate for close contact and symptomatic students. So here's a good example of what I said about that we needed to move a little bit quicker as the numbers would change. So with whole-build notifications, in those close contacts that I mentioned later, if there are four children around a child that was infected, those four children would get a notification that there has been a close contact, not a whole school. So we really want to get more stealth-like to be able to do notifications. So we're going to have to, we're still going to have to close contact, but if a building would reach that 2% level, then we'll start doing some all-building notifications. And that number, again, is, could be changed or dependent on what the total exclusion rate is. So again, close contacts will still be notified, and the health indicators at the website will continue to be updated daily. So we're going to, we're going to look at the data on a daily basis. As we continue to do, we've done that before, it's not a change, but this, this whole cascading of issues, or cascading of infection is a little different than what we've done. So here's, here's a good, a good slide. If you look at the green, that was where we were last year, from September through January. And if you look at the blue, that's where we are this year. So as we started in September, came back to school, we, we went up, and as we got into school into the, through, through the October period of time, we went way down. And now, if you look at the first spike, that is probably right around after Halloween, and the second spike is right around Thanksgiving, and now we're coming down into December and headed to January, but we're not, obviously, into the winter break yet. So we believe that we'll see that ebb and flow as long as things stay constant. But one of the big variables we don't know is Omicron, and what Omicron does, and we don't know to the extent that Delta will still be pushing its way through, through our population. But this is our data. This is the Rockwood School District student data and employee data as well. So here's, here are the same data in a different fashion. It looks the same, and you can see down to the, I don't think this has a, this has a pointer. As you can see, down to the far right, that's where we are now. So our numbers have been decreasing considerably over the last two, over the last week, week and a half. Now, remember, we're 24,000 people, and when you look at those numbers, if you do a percentage, that's us, that's not a very significant percentage. But every one of those children, every one of those employees count, as we can tell by some of the things that have happened with us just recently. So if it was a 2%, you can see at the top, it's 461. If it's a 4%, it's 923. So I thought, "Well, let's just grab some of the buildings, and let's look at some of the numbers." And what we're talking about is maximum, a maximum percentage out of school because of COVID. So this, this is kind of an average for each of the buildings, but it's the largest that they've had over the course of the school year. So let's start to the right instead of the left. Start to the right, and you can see that we have our four high schools and they're large-populated locations. And so all of those are under 1%. Then we move to the middle schools, and you can see that those percentages for their maximum percent out, other than Wildwood Middle School, hover around that 1%. maximum percent out, other than Wildwood Middle School, hover around that 1% number as well. Now, one could try to make the assumption, but I don't think it's causal, that these numbers are lower because there's a possibility that these students might be vaccinated. We have some numbers on how many students are vaccinated, only because it's been given in a voluntary basis, so we really can't say that's accurate. So we're, you know, we're guessing, basically. Now, if you look at the maximum percent out of the elementary schools, you can see that we had two that were above the 4% level. You can see that we have four that are, you know, above the 2% level and less than four. And then you can see there are about five that are hovering around that 2% level. And the thing that I want to caution you about is, those data are with masks. So we don't know what it would look like without masks or with the recommended mask process. The same would be true for all three levels. The other thing that's not there are all the other locations that we have in the district, transportation, food service, so on and so on and so forth. So that kind of shows you what our numbers look like, as we look at our numbers and our children and our kids. So, oh my goodness, that messed up. Okay, well, we'll just skip that one. Basically, what I did was I took the two, the largest and the smallest elementary, and the largest and the smallest middle school, and I just used the 4% number, so you can see the red number. But right there, for 4%, for Bowles is gonna be 14 students, for Gaggy, 29. For Crestview, it's looking like 52. And Wildwood's looking like 20-something. But I guess the point that I'm making is that, depending on your point of view, you can think, oh my gosh, that's a big number, or you can say, oh, that's not very many. So if you were thinking about a 2% level, you just take those numbers and cut them in half. And one of the things that we're concerned about, the administrative team's concerned about, is we don't want to be on and off and on and off. We want to have some consistency, and I know that that still could happen when you have these thresholds, that for two weeks you could be masked up, and then you go another week, and then you're masked up again. And we really want to have something that does two things. It honors the fact that the infection rates are moving, and we want to keep an eye on that. But it also doesn't put everybody in chaos every two to four weeks. So that's something to think about. So we started to basically signal what we were doing back in October, but then the week of the 6th is when we updated and shared some of this information with our administrators and our administrative team and our employee groups. And then we updated, and updated the plan and shared some information with the families and the staff, and then, obviously, we're here tonight. And that January 3rd, that's just there. That was a placeholder, so whatever the board decides on when that, when and if it starts, then we'll change that. And then, obviously, the next box has to be all of the timelines of implementation, communication. Now, we have about 95% of that already done. But we still have to do some discussion on training, training our nurses, training our administrators, working with logistics, and then beginning a communication plan for all of our parents as soon as you all, soon, if and when you make a decision on this. But we know that we need to do this and not be looking too far out, but we do need to look at the future. So we'll look at summer academy and the '22, '23 school year at a later date. And I think I even put in here when we'd look at the summer academy. We'll look and see if I, I think it's on the next slide. So what is that, for people that, people want options, right? Parents want to know, if you're gonna go to this, what option do I have? Well, we would highly encourage that you go, come back to school one-on-one, or face-to-face, I should say, and use the educational system that's there. But if you don't feel comfortable with that, and you don't think that fits for your child or your child has other circumstances, you, obviously, we obviously will be able to provide you with online learning through mocap at no expense. So those courses that are through mocap are state-approved, and we've been working with mocap since its inception, and we have students that are doing mocap now for various reasons. But for K-5 students, it's very simple. You can talk with your school principal or talk to Dr. Willett's office. And the launch coursework that is in mocap is what we would recommend, but there are other coursework there. We think it's the best. So you get six hours of daily teacher-supported virtual programming. It's live synchronous. There's a 25 to 1 teacher ratio, which is higher than our teacher ratio, but you do get a full-time teacher support, daily workbook, and accommodations with IEPs and 504s if you need it. So ELA, math, science, social studies. And then there are other five art-related courses that you can take, along with PE, art, music, coding, and some of the other things. That's an option for people who think that fits for them and fits for their children. The same thing is true for middle school and high school. So you have a combination of launch, online coursework, and mocap vendors. So there's several vendors that work through the launch and mocap process, and the courses are approved by DESI. You get credit, you meet all the graduation requirements. Your coursework is dependent on course availability, so that's a little different. And it's possible for students to have multiple vendors and use, and actually move fairly quickly through some of this, depending on their expertise and their ability to work through an online system. There may be a need to make alternative course selections based on course availability, so I do want to mention that. But that's, again, people have asked and said, what are you gonna do if, if my child can't continue to do in the environment that this proposal suggests? Now, this last set of supports, this is offered, this has been offered and will continue to be offered, and we know the effects of COVID and the pandemic have affected students in many different ways. So we highly suggest that if you're experiencing any of those things that are up here, we have social workers, counselors, behavior specialists, and we partner with other agencies, and Dr. Harris's office, along with building principals, will be more than happy to help address these needs now. And regardless of whatever plan heads to the future, we have these available now. And I didn't want to skip over that and not mention that this is available. These things are available now. So the proposed plan, as I said, went through the Admin Council, President's Forum, and the staff and community. We'll continue to use all of our news clearinghouse, all of our record-keeping. We'll continue to do community conversations, our website. The Rockwood Safe Together Plan will be, obviously, with data and information and resources that we had, and what we will continue to add to. We'll add that information as we go along. And then we will be doing some form of reporting to the board on a monthly basis. I mean, obviously, if we're, we want to be stealth-like, as I mentioned, and if things happen fairly quickly and our rates go up quickly, we want to let the board know what's going on, and we may, in an emergency situation, have to do special meetings or whatever to adjust what we're considering to doing. And again, I had mentioned about summer academy, and we're planning to make those decisions in March. And then in June, we'll do a year-end report after school's out to let the board know of what we consider to be, have been working, what didn't work, and how to move to the future. So with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions or any discussion that the board would care to do at this time.
Dr. Ricker? Where will this be posted, on the website?
Well, we have two sections of the web, on our webpage, and then we have the Rockwood Together Plan. So that's where we'll, if it's approved and everything's solidified, that's where we'll get it up just as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Now, I want to say thank you for the very detailed report. As you know, you and I have taken discussions that, I've been waiting for this for a long time, to see what we can do without the masks, because that's all we've known since November of 2020. And so I like what you've presented to us as is, but I don't know what my other colleagues are, so in terms of, I'll wait for that point. But I really do like what you've presented us today.
Dr. Ricker? I would like to consider and put before the board to look at a January 18th date.
Okay.
Let me, let me give, let me give you the rationale.
We cannot have you all interrupting our meeting. This is the last time I can warn the crowd. This is the board's meeting, and if we can't sit up here and discuss things like we need to, then you're welcome to leave the room and watch this on YouTube. We can't, we can't keep having these interruptions.
Let me share the rationale. One is, I have several points. One is that it is a natural break in the semester for students who need to move over to mocap or choose to do online learning. Two, it gives parents and individuals opportunity to get vaccinated a length of time from now till that point. So that gives them additional two weeks, two and a half weeks, three weeks, actually, to get their vaccination. And it also gives us that window of the time after we come back after winter break, to be sure that everything is copacetic and safe for everybody. So those are my three points for suggesting the January 18th date. Thoughts from the board?
We had an uptick, or a surge, after Thanksgiving in the schools. But it was quickly, quickly came back down after two weeks, if I remember right. It went up, but then it came back down after two weeks. Is that right, or can anybody confirm that?
Yeah, that's kind of what it shows here, that in the October period of time, once we got out and about with, what am I doing here? Not left-handed, that's why. When we got in October, and then we, everything was going good, and the end of October, end of October into, heading into November, that's when we started to move up. And this is kind of the, right in here is kind of the Thanksgiving break.
You're talking, you're probably talking, looks like, about, on the right side, where it was up to 142? That would be the, that'd be the, is that in December, or is that November? I can't say.
Yeah, this is December. This is like the first part of December.
Which would be right after Thanksgiving.
Right, right in here, through about the 10th of December, I think.
Which is right after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And that was with masks.
But is that, that's 2021?
Yeah, that's 2021. So do you know what the percentage was in terms of the overall population? Because you're looking at it as, let's say, around...
You mean of the, like, each of these numbers at the top?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the 4% would be 923, the 2% would be 461, and if you're 119, you're well below 1%.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Can, can parents move their students to online learning before the beginning of the second semester?
They can do it, actually, they can do that at any time. That's been available from, ever since the start of school, so we don't have to wait till second semester, we don't have to, I mean, there'll be some time to get started and get the courses set, and for, again, change takes a little bit of time, but we're not talking about too much time.
But wouldn't it be difficult for a student that was in a traditional setting to switch over for the last couple of weeks?
It, it, that would be each individual student's learning style, if you will, and ability to do the online learning. So, I mean, I think what we learned last year was some students worked very well in that environment, but a lot of students didn't. But again, to make that decision, it's not the district making that decision, it's the parents, the parents making that decision.
So let's look at that real quick. So ultimately, we're looking for a partnership with the parents to help us out with all this. So that means if the kid is sick at home, or is sick, keep them at home so we could continue on.
Yes, 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 yes.
Correct?
And again, I think one of the things that we have to talk with our nurses about, pre-COVID, they were sending kids home based on sickness and based on symptoms of all various kinds. And we don't want them to stop looking at those symptoms or stop looking at those sicknesses because there are other sicknesses that are around. We want to, we want them to be cognizant of those, but cognizant of the COVID multiple symptoms as well, and identify symptomatic students and get them to a physician or a test to make sure that they're not infected. But if they're infected, they need to stay home. And if they're sick, they need to stay home.
Something I think that is important, I think we need to look back till last year, 2020, when we look back to September, October. Cases started to spike, and yet what did Dr. Miles do? He put his back in school. Not only in school, he put his back in school five days a week, which nobody else did. He took a chance because he knew the district was ready, he did his homework. Our employees are great, and I feel like that enough work has been done with this, that I feel like if you're coming to us with this plan, I feel like we're ready. And I feel like this is a good plan that you've put forward.
No further questions. I would like to move that we do change the date to January 18th.
So you're making a motion?
I'm making that as a motion.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion to adjust the date in the plan from January 3rd to January 18th.
Correct.
Correct. Any other comments on that? So we will take an individual vote on that piece of information at this time. So the motion on the floor is to adjust the date from January 3rd to January 18th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No.
Yes, whatever. I oppose.
Keith, Dr. Kinder, did you weigh in? I'm sorry. Did you, you were, you were a yes, or you were...
I was in favor of it.
Yep, okay. So that is a 4 to 2, or, sorry. How many of us are here tonight? Yeah, 4 to 2.
Chair, do a roll call.
Is that when we roll call vote?
Go ahead.
Why don't we do a roll call vote?
Sure, let's do a roll call vote. Thank you, Janet.
Mr. Dunn?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Kinder?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Ronberg?
Yes.
Ms. Medyet?
Yes.
Ms. Vase?
Yes.
And the motion carries 4 to 2. Do we have any other discussion on the plan at this time?
Can you talk about lowering that percentage from 4% down to 3 or 2?
I'm sorry, you all, we're gonna take a five-minute recess right now, again, because we can't conduct our business without your calling out to us, which is totally disrespectful.
Do we know of any districts...
We'll take a five-minute recess right now, starting at 9:34. All right, we are back from our recess. We will resume our discussions, and if we need to stop the meeting again for disruptions, we will ask everyone to clear the room, and you may continue watching on YouTube so that we can finish up tonight's meeting. Dr. Ricker, do you want to pick us up where we left off?
If there are other suggestions or other ideas, you know, obviously, this is the time to bring them forward.
So Dr. Ricker, talk to us a little bit more about the 4% versus 3% versus 2%. I know many of the other districts are going with a lower percentage, and sometimes that percentage is actually students only, not students and staff.
Correct.
So talk to us how that was determined, what metrics did you use?
Yeah.
Give us more information.
Each district has kind of taken their own approach to this. Parkway, I think it was yesterday, in fact, decided on a 2% and then the 18th, and then they're gonna revisit that when they come back in January. I think, just my own personal look at this, when, and as I said earlier, I don't believe that we should be, you know, back and forth and back and forth. And I'm really concerned about that, because if you look at these numbers, especially in our elementaries that are at like 1.7, 1, you know, 1.6, and we've got some that are over 2, if we put a 2% rate, that that just, I believe that when the masks come off, those will all be just masked up anyway. I mean, I know the 6, the 6.3 and the 5, those were anomalies, I think, not anomalies. It was when we had sickness, and they went well down after two weeks, back down to their normal... in our elementaries that are at like 1.7, 1, you know, 1.6, and we've got some that are over 2, if we put a 2% rate, that, that just, I believe that when the masks come off, those will all be just masked up anyway. I mean, I know the 6, the 6.3 and the 5, those were anomalies, I think, not anomalies. It was when we had sickness, and they went well down after two weeks, back down to their normal, their normal look. So that would be a concern of mine. So, you know, 4%, I really wish that chart was available, but I took, Janet, can we get, pull that up? Bob, can you pull up that chart? The five, that I did 2 and 4% on a, it's going to, it's going to get pretty busy for you, but I think you'll be able to see it. The other chart, Bob. It's always the other chart. So, as an example, I took the staff population and the student population total, a 2% calculation, and then we did some rounding, and then a 4% calculation. But, I mean, obviously, it's just numbers, and it's half four, you know, 2 is half a four, so, you know, how, how much of a disturbance at, at Bowles with only seven students versus 13? I mean, they're infected students, and, and they're also close contact symptomatic students. So, again, my concern is, is that threshold, I mean, if it was six or eight, I would, I really would think that'd be very, very high. But the 2% is, we may be just having people going in and out and in and out. I, I, I don't know how to, to predict that, other than, I mean, I hate to say it, but to live it.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I don't know how to predict that, except to live it. And, and, you know, if we do a 30-day update to the board, and, I mean, you could go either, you could do it either way. You could say, hey, you know, in 30 days, show us the numbers and change it again. But I don't, I don't know that the community wants to be changing all the time. I think they want something consistent, they want something that, that they can look at, and that we can communicate on a, on a building basis that people know what they're looking at.
So you're very confident with the 4%?
I think I am, but with that being said, it, it also, I mean, the converse of the 2% maybe moving in and out, if the 4% is too high and we never, and we, and we hover around 2%, 2 to 3%, we need to look at that, too. Because we, our idea is that we want infections to go down and keep them at a minimal. And obviously, if we have a, if we have, I mean, let's be real honest, if, not that I'm not, but I am, if the staff has a run on their infection rate, we're going to have to figure out how to hold school, right? Or bus drivers have a run on their rate, we're going to have to figure out how to get kids to school, or food service, or, so all of that plays into it as well. So I didn't, I, I don't want to make it so low that it's, we might as well just mask, and I don't want to make it so high that it doesn't look like there's, there's a, a true strategy.
We had two schools that were over 5.
We did.
Is that a one-time shot?
Yeah, it was. Yes, it was. Yeah, it was...
Now, when I say one time, like a couple of days, or what was it?
About two weeks. I, Dave really worked hard with the building level administrators, and Amy Ware worked hard with the nurses, and it was a, once it, I mean, both occasions were, I mean, I hate to say this, but it was outside a school environment of, you know, it was a cheerleader group, and then it was a sleepover in another situation, and then it just, it kind of took off, and then, but based on the fact that we did some mitigation strategies, a lot, I mean, the masking was there already, but we spread the kids out, we stopped changing classes, we stopped large group meetings, we, we did some things, and, and about two, about two weeks later, 10 days to two weeks later, it came down dramatically.
So I'm thinking about all of the emails that we have received in the past two or three days, and I would like to thank everyone for their emails, and for the most part, they were very polite, respectful, to the point, you know, I thought it was a good communication. I received, I believe we all did, a number of emails concerned about the plan, and many felt they would be more comfortable with a lower percentage rate. So I am here to advocate for that as well, for those people, as well as everyone else in the room, and that, I know you're, in here, you're going to put in some mitigation efforts at 2%. And I understand you're thinking about 4%. It is my understanding that's the highest of any district in St. Louis County, right?
What'd you say, Mary?
Some districts are lower, but it's only positive.
Correct, and that, I think that's, that's key. What Mary's saying is, some districts are lower, like at 1.5 or 2% or 1%, but that's only cases that are infected and are identified. So they're not looking at the other cases that we will be looking at. They're not looking at the symptomatic cases that are close contact. They're just saying infection rate is this, and boom, that's it.
So we're looking at that 4% including close contact?
Close contact, symptom, symptom. Multiple symptoms, yes.
Students and staff, is that number, right?
Excuse me?
Is that a student and staff 4%?
Yes, yes, it's everybody in that location, yes. So some districts are just doing students, some aren't, I mean, they're, it's, once the, once the lid was off of this thing about a week and a half ago, it got all over the place. And you, and the same is true of our neighbors north and south. They're all doing different things, and, like, a couple of the schools, a couple of the school districts said, yeah, well, because the, the 6 through 12 students have had a chance to get vaccinated, we'll let them do mask recommended or masked optional, but we're going to hold the, the younger kids until we think they're well enough through a vaccine phase, if you will. And some of theirs, some of them are saying, well, we'll hold them until the 18th, but we'll let the others go quicker. So each, each district's kind of doing something different.
And on the elementary level, I mean, that's, the 4% is less than one, one child per classroom, less than one per classroom. So, I mean, I, I think 4% is, is fine. I think that was a fair number that you came up with. Because if you look at 2%, 11, I mean, as you said, pointed out before, it's going to be going in and out, in and out, in and out, and it's just not doing any, anybody, any, any good. You got the, the, the teachers wondering about, you know, teaching the kids, the kids trying to learn, everybody's trying to see what's going on, the parents are wondering, are they going to be, you know, what's going on at the school, back and forth, et cetera. I think the 4% is a, a nice compromise with what we have going on.
I would maybe say 3% would be a compromise, but...
Well, we're already starting later. So, I mean, it's...
That was a joke, Tom.
Yeah.
In order to change this from four to two, according to our rules, someone has to make a motion, and someone has to second it, and then it's voted on, right?
If you want to change it, yes, sir.
Anybody want to do that?
Can I ask you another question about staffing? You kind of addressed that, and that is, you know, something that is a consideration. Obviously, you know, these decisions are decisions, on a little bit of a side note, that have weighed extremely heavily on each and every one of us for months and months and months.
Yes, they have.
And first and foremost, I just want to show my full appreciation to everybody who works diligently, sitting on this stage, out in the audience, whomever you may be, the security we have, to consider the health and safety of our students, of our staff, and of all of us. And, you know, I, I really appreciate all of the work you've done. I know this exit plan, yeah, everybody, you all have been talking about this for months, and this is important work. And, you know, Randy made excellent points earlier about some things, you know, some changes that were made last year and some shifts that occurred, and, you know, we do appreciate even the work of Dr. Miles before you. We know this, these are things that have been weighing on a lot of people. Our staff is an obvious consideration, not only their health and safety, but the, so that we can continue operating a school district as it needs to be operated. So, you know, I think hearing that, that there's more components involved of the 4% is slightly more comfortable, but then also to hear, you know, you say that if something happens, and we are short on this, short on that, you know, whatever, if this is impacting a specific group, or we need to make adjustments, that this is a resolution tonight to basically say, we're going to address these adjustments that need to be made. And I think it's, you know, I know everybody is sick of this, I mean, everybody, 100%. I think that's something everybody can agree on. And I just think, you know, talking about a third through an 18th, I haven't talked about any of this earlier, but those considerations that Tammy mentioned to allow families who do need to make a change, for an elementary student, the date may not matter as much, but for a high school or middle school child who's enrolled in a class that's trying to end or finish up finals in an AP course, we have a lot of emails we've received of considerations of those students. I think that January 18th date is a very conscientious thing for us to be doing. I would also like to say that I think it's really important for everybody to hear that no matter what happens tonight, or whatever the decisions are on January 18th, 19th, going forward for the students that come in, that those kids and the adults are respected and are treated kindly and supported in whatever way they need to be supported. And that goes for the adults as well. And so, you know, I appreciate everything that, that you all have done, and I've taken up a lot of time to say that, but I hope that we can start to move forward in some capacity each day with showing more neighborly care for each other.
If there are no further questions, I'll sit down then.
I only, I'm going to go back to the 4%. I, I see your, I see your logic, and I respect that you've studied this, your team has studied this, I'm sure Glenn, Glenn Hancock's been involved in this, who, okay, but I think that's something that we should continue to look at, and when we get back together, we have the monthly report, I would really like to look to see if that's appropriate percentage to be, to be doing. We can get some comparison data from some of our neighbors and see what's going on.
Sure.
So I will bring it back probably again to the, to this board at...
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, on our Wednesday, I mean, we've been meeting weekly with the ed superintendents, about 70 superintendents, and then every week on Thursday with our working group and the physicians and the people that I mentioned earlier. But I, because everybody's in a different place, now we're all going to have to start to see how we're alike and how we're different, and what happened and what didn't, as, as groups. So we'll be definitely, it's, it was easy for the St. Louis group people to work because we were all doing the same thing. Now, that was, whether you liked it or not, we were all doing the same thing. But it was really difficult to try to compare anything that we were doing with our neighbors to the north or the south, because they were all over the place, too. So now we're all over the place, all of us are all over the place, if you will, and we got to start to look at variables and put some real science to it, and did it work and didn't it work? But I think, I mean, it goes without saying, I mean, you've, and I know many of you have heard me say this, there is, I believe, limited infection going in school between adults and students, or students to students. What we can't control and what causes the biggest problem for us, I believe, is what people are doing on their own time, on their weekends, and all of that, and that, that comes into the school, whatever that means. And we, we just deal with it and make it work.
And I think we need to recognize that there's many, many people who are very concerned about what this change will bring
Mm-hmm.
to, to their child, to, to the school, to the, to the staff. So we need to recognize that, and I will work, I will work and support this resolution with all that I can to make it the best thing possible for our children, but we need to continue to, to look at things very critically, very openly, and without a lot of noise surrounding it.
Dr. Rickert, one last quick question about data. On the website, how is it going to look on the website? Like, will it be different than the way it's been now?
Yeah, Bob, can you go back to the presentation? It won't look like that. That's bad. So we'll, we'll, we'll continue to this, to do this kind of data, but we're going to have to do it by building, right? So, and, and Glenn Hancock is phenomenal to do that for us. So we'll have some of this look-ish, but I, I believe graphs kind of tell the story. But we really need to be able to see that 2%, if we stay with the 4%, if they're getting close to 2%, that we have to be able to shift and do mitigation strategies immediately. But remember, if, if it goes over the threshold, you're in that, that masking mitigation strategy for two weeks, not a day and a half, three days, it's two weeks. Because we want to put everything together to make sure we have the whole package to, to make a difference in the infections. So...
And how frequently will that be updated?
Well, daily. I mean, we're doing this daily now. So we'll, when we get, Glenn's already been thinking about it, he's, he's phenomenal, so he, he kind of knows what I'm interested in, and if you notice in this one, it says, you know, positive cases and at home with symptoms. See, now we're already starting the language, right? So that's going to be the way I think we can do this. And you know how our dashboard, the dashboard we currently has is done by building? It has the dropdown, you can see your building, and it had like, less than five? We're going to put the numbers in there. We're not going to, I don't want it to, I want it to be just concrete for people to see. And so, so anybody can get on there at any time and say, hey, you know, we're at, I don't know, we're at 1.75, or, and we better start thinking about what strategies, you know? And, and again, remember, we're, we've been looking at classrooms and grade levels and, and especially at the, at the high schools and the middle schools, you know, a student goes through seven or eight classes a day, I mean, we're going to really know where these kids are and who they're in contact with if they're infected, or if they're, if, if we have symptomatic infect, close contact. So it's, it'll be tedious, but I think it'll be, and I know it'll be accurate.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rickert. Ms. Romberg, would you go ahead and read the resolution now? I was going to read it when you're finished reading it, but I can do it now. So, to reiterate, the motion is to approve the resolution expressing support and control, and approval, sorry, of the superintendent's revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan as amended.
Whereas pursuant to Section 171.011 RSMO, the Board of Education of the Rockwood R6 School District, the district, has the authority to make all needful rules and regulations for the organization, grading, and government in the district. And whereas Section 167.191 RSMO provides that it is unlawful for students afflicted with any contagious or infectious disease, or while liable to transmit such disease after having been exposed to it, to attend any public school of this state, and the teachers and directors of the school districts may require examination of any pupil, so long as there is, there is any liability of such disease being transmitted by such pupil. And whereas decisions by the courts of the state of Missouri establish that the authority granted by these and other Missouri statutes includes authority to adopt health and safety policies, plans, and regulations to protect the district's students and employees. And whereas after review of guidance issued by numerous sources, including the Centers for Disease Control, the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and local medical personnel, the superintendent, acting pursuant to the authority granted by Missouri law and district policies, prescribed a Rockwood Safe Together Plan for the 2122 academic year to help protect the students and staff of the district from the illnesses associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, and to ensure that classes remain in person for the greatest number of students as possible. And whereas to address the evolving circumstances of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the superintendent has proposed a revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan as presented to and included in this December 16th, 2021 Board of Education meeting agenda. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to express its public support and approval of the revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan, and whereas the Board of Education has determined that the revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan has a real and substantial relation to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and health and safety of district students and personnel, and is in the best... and health and safety of district students and personnel, and is in the best interest of the district, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Rockwood R6 School District as follows. Section 1. The Board of Directors hereby expresses its support and approval of the revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan presented by the superintendent at the Board of Education meeting. Section 2. Nothing herein shall be construed to abrogate or interfere with the authority delegated by Missouri law and Board of Education policy to the superintendent, or with the superintendent's authority to adopt future regulations or duties to protect the health and welfare of the district's students and employees. Section 3. Nothing in the revised Safe Together Plan shall be construed to directly or indirectly close, partially close, or place restrictions on the opening of or access to any district schools, adopted the 16th day of December, 2021.
Thank you. So the motion is to approve the resolution expressing support and approval of the superintendent's revised Rockwood Safe Together Plan as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would we like to do a roll call on that? Or are we good? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, thank you all for your work. We have, we'd like to invite Dr. Shelley Willet up. She's going to provide some information only to us tonight about some book updates. Thank you for your patience, Dr. Willet.
I'm here with two informational items tonight. The first one is regarding our first challenge book reviews. I want to review the process with you and give you a glimpse of what the meeting looks like when we actually hold it. We start by sharing the concerns from the parent who fills out the form. They get to share with the committee their concerns, and then the committee gets to ask them any questions. After that, they are released from the meeting, and then the committee carries on to discuss the library policy. Then they look at the value of the book, and then they compare the concerns with the value of the book and make a recommendation. I think it's important to point out that the reason that we have the challenger leave after that meeting, after the conversation starts, is that we want to allow the committee to have authentic conversation without interruption and without fear of their conversation ending up on social media. So we did have an instance where we did have a challenger take pictures of the committee in one of our sessions. So there was some concern from them. So at this point, I do have six books that we are bringing forward tonight. We are bringing forward All Boys Aren't Blue by Georgia M. Johnson, Crank by Ellen Hopkins, Gender Queer by Maya Kobabi, Looking for Alaska by John Green, The Haters by Jesse Andrews, and Where I End and You Begin by Preston Norton. And the committee has decided that these are all library books that only appear in our high schools. They are not in our middle or elementary schools. The committee decided in each of these cases to retain without restriction in the school library. Any questions?
How many books in the Rockwood schools' libraries are classified as restricted?
None at this point.
Can you explain what the appeal process would be?
What the appeal process would be? Yes. So the way that the regulation is written is that we send a letter, and those will be sent tomorrow to the person who made the challenge, outlining that they can indeed appeal the committee's recommendation. They will have the opportunity to do that, and within 14 days, they have to send an appeal to the school board in order to appeal that book, that decision, that recommendation, I should say.
And then who does that appeal go to?
It goes to the school board.
School board, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Having said on the committee, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the fact that while the committee comes to consensus, there are dissenting opinions on the, within those groups, and that the voice of the individuals were heard. Thank you.
I have sat on two challenge book committee meetings, and I would concur with you, Tammy.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Willet.
Thank you.
And next up, you are remaining up here for a co-presentation of multi-tiered systems of support.
All right. So I'm really excited to present this work tonight. We've got a mighty team that is working on our multi-tiered systems of support, and that is what MTSS stands for. We have been working on this for several years. I think it's important to note that Rockwood has been behind in this area. And so we're trying to speed up our work to make sure that we are doing the things that we need to do, to make sure that all kids have access to the wonderful resources that we offer in Rockwood. So in this presentation, I'm going to talk about why we're doing this work, what does it look like for us, what the foundational principles are for this work, and the action steps for 2122. So why are we focusing on this? It is an area goal for us in the way forward. Dr. Harris is actually the champion of universal equity, opportunity, and access. This system is actually part of that. And then it definitely falls under student academic learning, because there are a lot of instructional things that we provide students in these systems that we're building. It also aligns with our profile of Rockwood Learner that was created from our community listening sessions, feedback, and committee work, and it represents our shared values as a community. So the purpose of a multi-tiered system of support is that we make sure that we take a systematic approach to using every resource that we have, so that when a student needs that resource, we have the structure to provide it for them. It really is about making sure that all kids have that access, and that each child can ultimately get the resources that they need that leads to their academic success. So you can see that we've got four different systems of support that we're working at building out in Rockwood. The first is our academic supports. You may have heard that referred to as RTI in the past, response to intervention. We've got our social, emotional, and mental health supports. Dr. Harris is actually going to present after me, talking about some of the things that he's putting in place systematically for that. We've got behavioral supports, that we've increased our behavioral specialist support in the district. And then we've got a post-high school plan supports. We're just starting that work, and we're really hoping to broaden that and really start those experiences earlier with kids to start thinking about and preparing for their post-high school plans. We have an MTSS leadership team that meets frequently. All of these people are involved. You can see that I've got classroom teachers on there, but I don't have their names, because that rotates in and out. As you know, we have a sub situation, and we can't always pull the same teachers for that. So we have principals that are very diligent about using their building subs, and making sure that we have a small group of teachers that regularly attend to give their input. We do have middle school people on this committee. We've really started with K-5, but we're hoping to get into that middle school and do more structure around that. Of course, there are already interventions going on there, but getting those structures in place. But we're really trying to focus those efforts on K-5, because we know that early intervention is important. And to support that early intervention, our wonderful partnership with the Special School District has enabled us to add three positions to support this work. We have an early intervention team that consists of Lisa Young, who is our early intervention school psychologist, Shannon Weatherby, who is our speech-language pathologist, and we just recently added Kate Lewis, who is our social worker from Special School District. We have housed them in the annex, so they're working with the curriculum team quite a bit, and they're integrated into our processes, and it's great that we can access them at a moment's notice. The foundation of the work that we're doing here in Rockwood really comes from SolutionTree's work. We're using these two books as our main text, Learning by Doing, which supports the professional learning community process that we have our teachers engaging in regularly. And then we also use the Taking Action book, which is more centered on RTI, and response to intervention. This year, we are engaging in these learning plans, which I think is pretty significant, given all the constraints that we face with pulling people out and getting that training done. This is a big leap, and we've been able to do it at this point. This fall, we had an, the MTSS leadership team did some foundational training through SolutionTree to define our Rockwood language and determine the direction that we were going. We've engaged all of our buildings on the PLC day, on the PD days. We have a PLC strand for our teams at the buildings to learn more about professional learning communities and how they can support this process. And then we have a team that meets on those four days that are learning about MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. That is actually teams of teachers and administrators with our SolutionTree presenters, and they're learning how to implement these structures in the building to get those systems going. In October and April, we brought in that same MTSS trainer to work with our administrators, to teach them more about how this process works in their buildings. So the first foundational principle that we're really focusing on is all means all. And this has been a real struggle for us, but we've really dug in and figured out ways to make this happen. When we say all means all, we want all students exposed to grade-level instruction. So when students receive intervention during the day, we don't want that intervention to happen when that grade-level instruction is happening with the teacher in the classroom. So we're really working on that. Our coaches have been instrumental in working with teams at the building to ensure that we get kids in that grade-level instruction. And the reason for that is, if we just pull them out and try to work on the gaps that they have, they're getting further and further behind, because they're not getting that grade-level instruction at the same time. So it really is about speeding up that process. Foundation two is collective efficacy, and that really is the power of teacher teams to believe that they can make a change with students and working together collaboratively to do that. We have great collective efficacy going on in our buildings, and the power of those teacher teams is really what drives this work and leads to that student achievement. Principle three is first best instruction and grade-level curriculum. So we've really worked on that again this year. That first step is getting every child in grade-level instruction, but really looking at what does that grade-level instruction look like? What does that first best instruction look like? And how can we do some reteaching there before we have to lead a student into an intervention that takes place outside the instructional model? And then our foundational principle number four is to create and maintain district and building level systems. This is all about systems. And while some people feel that systems are stifling, systems in this case are going to allow all of our kids to have access to the great resources that we have here. When you have that system in place and you're regularly using data, you can target who needs those interventions and get them to them quickly. So we started with each building, building a guiding coalition. Each one of our elementary buildings started with that. They targeted teachers and staff members who had an eagerness to promote change, who really wanted to work on these tasks at hand, were highly credible with their stakeholders, so they were well-revered in their buildings, and they had proven leadership skills. So it's given us some opportunity to do some teacher leadership as well. Then they build consensus on the school's mission, and then they started working on their PLC teams. Some of our buildings are further along than others, but everybody's making progress in this area, and we feel really good about the direction that we're headed. Those PLCs review the essential standards and tier-one first best instruction. So they're unpacking standards, they're looking at proficiency scales, they're figuring out what their end targets are, and planning their instruction together to get kids on track. And then they want to ensure that all students have access to the essential standards and access to tier-one first best instruction. That really is critical. You can't just jump to the interventions. You have to make sure you have really solid footing on that tier-one instruction to begin with. So the other action steps that we have for this year, we're going to form building intervention teams, which we've obviously already started that process, focusing on that first best instruction. And the next thing that we just recently started is having our elementary buildings create building behavior matrices to work on that behavioral system of support. The staff collaboratively determined what those behavior expectations were going to be in all areas of the school. So it's really giving them an opportunity to tie in their character ed programs, create a common language, and eventually, this will serve as a foundation to get all of their support staff together and learning so that every area of the building, the kids have those same behavior expectations. So it's not a surprise, they act that way on the bus, they act that way in the cafeteria, we act that way on the playground. And then data reports and data literacy, Dr. Rickert referred to earlier, Glenn Hancock and his amazing data team. They have really gotten some nice reports together for us, and they've done a lot of training sessions this year on not just academic data, but how to use the social, emotional data they have in their buildings to get these systems of support running. Our early intervention team from Special School District, along with our instructional coaches, have been going out to the elementary buildings and modeling the process of how to look at student data and how to determine which interventions would be best for those students. So there's lots of moving parts going on and lots of participation all over the district. Any questions?
Thank you. That was very detailed. Thank you so much for sharing the work that's being done. And one of the things that I want to point out, and my question was, and I think you clarified, and that is that we have a consistent system across the district with the same, not that everyone's doing the same thing for all the interventions, because they should be tailored to fit the needs of the students, but that we're consistent in the system across the district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if I walk into a building and I talk about MTSS, I should be getting the same kind of information, no matter where I am?
You should be.
Good. And it does take time, realizing that it takes time to filter down from your leadership team
It does.
to the building and put it into place. But if we're consistent in how we approach it, we're going to see better results for all of our students.
Yeah, I think it's pretty remarkable that we've made the progress that we have this year with all the other things that our teachers have had to take on. They've done this and done it willingly.
And I think they will, they, I, my thoughts are that it's because they see the value in what is being done.
Yes.
And that's why they're behind it. Thank you so much for all the work you're doing and the staff that's working on it.
So Shelley, this is part of the way forward, right?
Mm-hmm.
And this is under the...
Universal Access and Equity.
Yes, it's under that, right. Universal Access and Equity, full area.
Yeah, it is an equity initiative. We want to make sure that all kids have equal access to these things when they need them.
All means all.
Yes.
One last comment, and I really appreciate that you're focusing on that best practices for tier-one in-class instruction, which is the foundational piece.
Yes, prevention is the first step.
Shelley, it really is a shame that this presentation had to be this time of night. I wish we could have had this first before we had patrons' comments, because I guarantee some of the people, some of the parents in the audience would have been as impressed as we are. It's a nice presentation. You've done an excellent job. I hope people, as they watch this, they watch this thing all the way through at home. Excellent presentation.
It is some of the most important work we do.
Thanks to all of you.
And the ones who stayed around, thank you guys very much. We appreciate that. All of you, every single one of you.
Dr. Kenda will be giving autographs out later.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Willet? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, we will move into the Alternative Learning Plan update with Dr. Terry Harris coming up.
I want to say, as I get started, and Janet is not looking at me, because she's going to be upset when I say this, but I will correct this presentation. I sent this presentation early, and I made some changes, but I didn't want to tell Janet, because I know she was going to get upset with me, so. No, I made it before then. All right.
Terry, Dr. Harris, are you showing the new one? Are you showing the one that we see?
This is the one you see.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's not, I mean, it's just a few changes in terms of the design of, but the material's the same. So a year ago, we were charged with doing an evaluation of our alternative program, specifically at the ILC. And as we started to get into this work, the committee, we wanted to think about alternative education, not simply as the ILC location, ILC location, but all of the alternative offerings that we have in our school. Having said that, and I don't have a slide up here, I just want to talk to you about this. The definition of alternative education is anything that is outside of the traditional setting. And you're going to see that in a second. And so as we started to look at our offerings, we came quickly to this belief, which I'm so happy that Shelley was able to present before me. This is the first belief that we came up with. MTSS is the foundation of alternative education. It's the start. It's the start. All schools with great alternative offerings have a wonderful, robust, ever-growing MTSS system, and we are on that verge to having that. We believe all students can learn in their homeschool or in a traditional school setting when the appropriate academic interventions are in place. For two years, specifically looking at the ILC and talking with that staff, the staff told us that the students that they were receiving, they were not prepared to support those students. Because the model that we had before didn't align with the ever-changing challenges that we were seeing with our students, and we didn't have a robust MTSS system in place. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that same concept at some of our other schools as well. Secondly, what we heard from the staff at the ILC, as well as our, some of our other programs, as well as the principals, meeting the mental and emotional needs of our students is foundational to any and all academic success. I mean, we know this. This is very basic, basic information. But yet, we did have a systemic approach in place to be able to address some of these concerns. Again, what research told us as we started to look at this is that there are basically three ways to consider alternative education. One, you have alternative programs that are targeted strategies, and, I'm sorry, targeted strategies that are in schools. This is what we call MTSS. So Tammy, to your point about first best instructions, that's where you have that. Alternative programs, you're going to see this as I talk a little bit later, as our restore program, the refresh program, so on and so forth. And then you have alternative schools. In our case, we don't have an alternative school. We're looking at an alternative center to be able to support students. We didn't want to simply focus on alternative education at the third level, which is alternative center. We wanted to look at a continuum of supports for our students. And having said that, we came up with this rebranding of pathways. I want to be very clear that our alternative education is, we wanted to change the mindset of this linear approach, right? Student is at a traditional school, didn't do well now that we moved the kid to a separate setting, to a more cyclical approach. And you're going to see that, hence this new branding that we have. So our four pathways are in four areas. Restore, and some of these, the first three we already have in place is really rebranding and adding more supports. So restore, formerly known as the student restore program. Refresh, which is a discipline program, if a student is suspended outside of school for more than 10-plus days. Personalize, and the wellness center, which is the piece I'm going to spend most of my time talking about today. So the restore pathway. Restore pathway is a program that is within the school setting. All four of our high schools have a restore room. All six of our middle schools have a restore room. And so this room is designed for students who may need flexible scheduling, may need in-school supports, but not a student who is at a point where they need to find resources outside of their homeschool. So all four high schools have this setup. In terms of staffing, I know Tammy sent the question, so I'm going to try to address this as I present, but you can always jump in as well. The staffing at our schools right now, four high schools, two high schools have one full-time staff person plus a CA, classroom assistant, and two high schools, LaFayette High School and Eureka High School, are without a classroom assistant. I did have a conversation with Dr. Counts, and we are going to at least explore what that potentially may look like in terms of the budget. But one of the pieces that we stated early on in terms of the budget process, that as we redesign the new what center, we're not going to add any more expenses to that. So we're trying to work within the money that we have, and we did change some things up, and you will see that a little bit later. Again, Tammy had a question regarding that level of support. We had a principal meeting last week. I met with all four high school principals in the room. As it stands now, in our restore rooms at the high school, we probably are averaging anywhere between 10 to 20 students. I'm sorry, that's not, that's not, that's not an average. Case load, we have 10 to 20 students. So if you were to walk in any class at any hour, you probably would see anywhere between three or four students at a time in a room. So the CAs would be a huge help. All high school principals said that having a CA would be a huge help. In addition, the middle school students or principals said the same thing. Is that a need or a priority at this point? Not necessarily, right? We feel like we are appropriately staffed at the high school restore room. Again, you're very familiar with the restore room. This is just more so rebranding. Moving over to personalize, again, any education that is outside of the traditional classroom format, we're considering alternative education. So our early college program is alternative education. Missouri Options is alternative education. Virtual learning, flexible learning. We have students who have flexible schedules. We have kids who are doing internships that are outside of class, students that are participating in the Spark Program, our partnership with Parkway, and any creative community partnerships that we just don't have yet. Right now, our IPI department is working really hard to ensure that our students have opportunities outside of the traditional classroom. We're considering all of those as alternative education. And that third bullet point is taken straight from the way forward, which causes us, or ask us to create a pathway for personalized learning. The refresh program, again, this is, and I'm really proud of this, we've worked hard over the last, I don't know, 10 years to continue education for students who were struggling with discipline. So if a student received 10 days or more outside of school, or 40 days for that matter, we didn't want the student to sit at home, so a student have an opportunity to continue their education within our school setting at a different location. So this is specifically for our students who are receiving discipline in our schools based on violation of our handbook. In terms of staffing, because that was another question that came up, we have one staff person for the refresh program, which is new. So currently, we have 41 students who have received 10 days or more and are not, are placed outside of their homeschools. But those 41 students are in five locations. So what we're saying, when we move this program next year, we'll have one location, and this program is specifically focusing on discipline. The restore program and the refresh program, as it stands now and its current iteration, are together. And one of the things that the restore teachers ask us to do is to remove the discipline piece from the restore program so they can concentrate and focus on the mental and emotional needs of those students in their school and not have to deal with the discipline issues as well. Those are the three areas that we already have in place, that we've been having, that we've been working on for years, and we're just continuing to add to it. And here's the big piece. So one of the things that the committee said is that our teachers are great, principals are wonderful, and we can teach all students. So Shelley's point of all means all, our teachers, the individuals who are part of this committee, were 100% committed to that phrasing. But they're also realistic. And the reality is, the teachers can teach, but they didn't have the skill set or the tools or the resources to meet the emotional needs of our students who are experiencing some really major challenges. I want to give you an example. We have a student who we worked, I worked with, so 4.0 student, athlete, athlete, and the student struggled with an eating disorder. Student didn't struggle academically. She struggled with an eating disorder. Our school setting, as it stands, we don't have anything to really address that. So the family, having resources, the student went to a location outside of the state, stayed there for a couple of months, got herself healthy, eventually came back to school. She's doing well. We have students who, right now, had fights, which is an anger issue. Well, right now, our system doesn't really do anything to specifically address that anger issue. And what the committee decided, and what the committee wanted to do, is create a system where we are addressing the emotional, mental needs of a student first, with the belief that if we address those issues, we will be able to support those students academically. And that's what this center will do. So we take a look at, and I won't read all these to you, but we take a look at, and part of the reason I won't read them to you because I can't see it, but if you take a look at the screen, those are some of the issues that our principals have shared, counselors, social workers have shared, that we need to really take a look at to support our students. We're sending increase in anxiety, depression, again, eating disorder, post-traumatic stress disorder, school refusal, and the big piece is substance abuse. So instead of suspending a kid or having some kid removed to a different center, how do we help those individuals work through the challenges that they're having so that they can find the academic success in school? The academics piece, this was the big piece, and I'm sure Tammy, you'll probably bring this up a little bit later, as part of our vision. Hear me say that the academics are really important, but we are very intentionally focusing on the mental and emotional health. Therefore, academics are potentially suspended in some cases. Students are not going over to this new wellness center to work on academics, but academics is definitely a part of their learning. So the academics that we're going to do, once Shelley and her team completely get Rockwood Online up and running, we'll focus our attention there. Until then, we'll use the Missouri Course Access and Virtual School Program, MOCAP, Mostly Launch, or whatever programs that are out there that are approved by the state. In addition, just like the ILC, we will definitely have special school district partnership, so IEPs will be serviced, one-on-one tutoring, smaller classrooms, self-paced workload, and we'd want to really eliminate that competition in terms of competing with your peers around academics. We really want you just to focus on and get, and get well. The other piece I think I want to really highlight is with the academics, we want to honor students who are wanting to take higher level courses. We didn't want to take that away from them. So again, the example that I used earlier with a student who had an eating disorder, she had a four-point-plus GPA, and she was taking honor classes. We will have students who are able to take on some of those classes at the wellness center, and we want to honor that and not take that away. In addition, we'll have students who are not at the level of taking honor classes, and so we want to accommodate them as well. But academics is secondary to meeting the mental and emotional needs of the students. However, I did want to let you know that we are going to focus on, I mean, we're going to have an academic component, it's just not the priority. And as you can see, in terms of the goals of the, the components of the wellness program, every student will have an individualized personal behavior, mental, social, emotional learning intervention plan, an academic plan. Students will participate in group therapy, expressive therapy, so on and so forth. When we have a safe, secure environment with 24-hour monitoring, that's not meaning that the kids will be there, but it is to say that with this program, we're going to partner with the St. Louis Children's Service Fund. And so if there are students who, let's say, when we go on break, they need some support and they are not able to be alone, we want to make sure that we're partnering with, of an agency where these kids continue to receive the support. And we're doing that now through some of our programming. The process to get into the wellness center, any student, parent, or staff member can complete the referral form. The form is ready to go. We have that out there that I can add to this later. We'll then have a family meeting. This is the important piece. Any student that is referred to the wellness center, and we believe that that's, we can help that student, we're going to admit that student. I don't, I don't want to paint this picture as if we're not going to accept students. That's not the case. But the family meeting will allow for us to have a conversation with the family and the student so they understand what they're getting and what they're signing up to, signing up for, and that makes sure that there's that level of commitment. Then we'll review the process with the wellness team, the director, the counselor, nurses, so on and so forth, to make sure that we can meet the needs of that student. And then once we're able to do all those things, we enroll the student. However, I want to say, again, this is a cyclical process. So if there, we may believe that there's a student that is in need of the wellness center, and in reality, that student just need the restore program room, right? So we want to make sure that we are trying all the things first before we get to this level. When you think about a tiered system of support, this is really tier three support for our students, and we want to make sure that we paint that picture. Kind of talked about some of the goals of the program. I'm sorry, this is like if a student were to come in with anger management. So we'll help that student with developing empathy, different ways to handle and deal with their anger, take responsibilities for their actions, so on and so forth. And let's say you have a student who came in and they were experiencing...
Trauma.
The goals here would be develop the strength to handle many forms of adversity, understand what trauma is, so on and so forth. So each student who is admitted to the center will have a pathway into the center and a goal to help them to have a pathway out of the center. Very clear about that. And this is the slide that our staffing. This is a slide that's a little bit new. So we changed the position from a coordinator to a director, so this person would be the director of non-traditional learning. We think that when we say alternative education, that creates a certain mindset that is something that we're trying to get away from. So any learning that is not in the traditional classroom is non-traditional learning, which is our definition of alternative education. So one director of non-traditional learning, five teachers at this new center, two social emotional behavior specialists or social workers, same, same kind of skill set background. One of the social workers, SEBs, will serve as the clinical intake specialist, so we really want someone with that clinical background. And then of the 17, 18 social workers that we have, we probably have 12 or 14 of them who are, you know, have that clinical background, so I don't think that we're going to have a problem there at all. We do want to make sure we have a counselor. So this is a piece that's really important, and my committee, in all transparency, we struggled with this a lot. The old space that we had, a student would leave their homeschool, go to the ILC, and potentially never return, like that became their school. What we're saying is, we want to create something that is a pathway in to get support and then have those students transition back to their homeschool. We really believe that we have to prepare students to be able to cope in the real world, right? Like, the wellness center is not going to be there forever. Kids have to be prepared to be able to transition back, and we have to help them do that. That's our responsibility. So we want to have, hire one counselor who's an academic counselor and as well as serving as a transitional coordinator. This person will work between the center as well as all of the schools to ensure that that student is ready to go back. And I will say that we may potentially have students who will never, ever leave the center. So then that counselor transitional coordinator will work with the student and the family to help find resources and services outside of the center once they graduate, similar to what we do with special school district. One nurse, right now, there's, before, there was no nurse at the ILC. We make, this is really important, one school resource officer, a secretary, and a classroom A day in the life at the center, simple schedule, start the morning with a group therapy, academic slash individualized treatment plans. So some students will focus on their academics while others are receiving what treatment they have. And you kind of go through that, launch wellness program, and then the last piece is transitions, just as an example. And again, this is very flexible, so some students may be there for a half a day, some students may be there for a whole day. Next steps, hire the director, collaborate on core values, work out some of the logistics, update the facility. The money that we are not using for, the budget that we're not using for the ILC, we're going to use that money to buy new furniture, paint, make the space more of a wellness space, so we have a little bit of money there. And then prepare the students for '22. I met with the principals, I shared the referral plan with them, talked to them about the program. We're ready to go. We have students that are in need of this program today. I'm really excited about what we have. I think it's going to be a model for the region, and I'm just really super excited that we will be a district that is solely focused on the intense emotional needs of our students. Sorry it was a little bit long. I'm sure you guys have questions.
Terry?
Yes?
I had some, but I'm going to, it's so late, I'm going to email you on most of mine, but one quick one. Have you figured out a budget of what this is going to cost?
So it's the budget that we currently have. Like, the ILC's budget, operating budget, is something like $893,000. And so my charge was not to add any more expense to that, so I have to operate within that 893.
Is that in your budget already, Paul and Dan? Is that already in your budget for next year? Is that already in your budget for next year?
It's in, it's in the numbers that we presented you this evening. Just have the numbers, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Can you hear me? Dr. Kinder, the, the, uh, budget allocation that Dr. Harris is speaking to were funds that were in place when the ILC was in place. We've continued to earmark those funds and have them set aside. They're included in the numbers that we discussed with you this evening.
Okay.
They're part of that budget process.
Terry, if it's okay, I'll email you the rest of my questions.
Definitely.
Thanks, sir.
I do have several questions, if I could. Terry, uh, Dr. Harris, you talked about, um, you mentioned the split from the Restore for the Refresh students. So where will they be if they're not in the Restore? And yet, they're going to be in our schools, which we want to keep them there during that, that suspension. But where will they be housed and how will that be accommodated?
So, um, I'm not really for sure where they're going to be housed right now. I mean, so we have a couple of options. One option is, uh, we can house the students, um, at the NXB Building, which is where the Wellness, uh, Center would be, and they separate the spaces, which is the, the model that we had before. We can house the, right now, um, the person that's doing the Missouri Options Program is, is at one of our high schools. So this person could potentially take over that aspect of the Refresh Program, and we can house the kids at the, that high school. So there are a few, few options. We're still working tho, those options out, or those details out. But we're very clear that the, the success of the Refresh or Restore Program is predicated on separating the two. We, we don't have the capacity, the teachers don't have the capacity to do both.
And I understand that. I want to make sure, though, that we have the capacity for where we're putting them. A, for their best interest, and that then, if they go to the, if they go to the Wellness Center, that we're not overtaxing what we're already trying to accomplish there. See what I'm saying? So I think that that's, that's one of my questions.
But Tammy, to be, to be clear, that there, we have students in the Refresh Program, that's the rebrand that we're calling, we have students in that program now. So they, and, and they're just housed in, in those school, of the four schools. So
But currently, they're, they're in the Restore area.
Yes.
And now they won't be. So they got to go somewhere.
Yeah, but we have, we have, I think, we, we have five options to send, places to send students, as it stands. So what we're saying is, we're going to reduce that to, that five to one, one location.
But I do, I just want to voice my concern. Another part that I want to ask you a question, you talked about for the, um, enrollment, and that you have a family, and I think it's great that you're including the family, but I didn't see any place where there's family engagement as the student receives services so that they're engaged in that process of wellness.
Yeah, definitely. I, I can send you, uh, a copy of the referral form, so you can see that. I just didn't, I not, I feel like I took a lot of time.
But I do think it's important that we have constant, ongoing engagement with the families.
That's one hundred percent part of the process.
Okay.
So as part of the, the personalized plan that we were writing with the, the student is actually a family plan that we're writing, and that's part of the process. We ask, the referral process, the application process, if you will, consists of three pieces. There's a referral form from the school or the, or staff members, but it's also, um, a referral application form from the student as well as the parent. So there are three separate forms that the students will find out.
Well, but it's, and I hear what you're saying, that there's a referral form to get them there. What I don't hear you saying is that there's an ongoing engagement to inform the parents to keep, to, I mean, parents, some of these, some of our parents need interventions as well. If the, because the child's going to go back to that environment. And that I didn't see in the program. And just having the form isn't the same thing.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I hear you. I, I, I think that there's, um, you know, there, there is this space of things that we can potentially control, and then there are things that are really out of our control. We're going to work hard to connect families. But to your point, that some of these families may have, um, a traumatic past as well, um, I, I don't, I don't want to stop the support of the student because the family may be absent. But we will work with the families.
And that's not what I'm saying.
And we do that, we do that now.
What I, what I would like to see is a, an intentional family plan as part of it.
I understand.
Another question that I have, and you did answer it. Um, Dr. Kinder, when you talked about the current ILC budget, that we're within that budget restraints with what we have. Um, and then you talked about this Director of Non-Traditional Learning. Will that person be overseeing the Restore, the Personalized, the Refresh, and the Wellness Center? All of those pieces?
Yes. And, and, uh, overseeing is probably a stronger word, but overseeing the center and supporting the other three.
Terry, one more question before you move on to your next presentation. Student can't just refer themselves, they have to have, they have to have parent permission until they're emancipated, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I need, thank you.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not trying to get into cement, cementis excessively, but a student can refer themselves as a, and that can be a trigger, right? So if a student says, like, I know that I'm struggling with this and I need support, they can write the application, which is going to go to the counselor. We then will contact families and then work with that, that student and that family.
I was going to say, you can't put that student in the Wellness Center unless parent permission.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thanks.
Terry, you talked about the Children's Services Fund, and I'm sure you've already thought about this, but it seems to me there's lots of opportunities for partnerships with lots of different agencies.
Absolutely. Like, mo, the, the, the reality of not having to increase the budget is because of the St. Louis Children's Service Fund. So we already partner with the Live and Well, we already partner with CHADS, we already partner with Preferred Family Health, we already partner with Prevent Ed. All of these, these agencies that we have a strong partnership with will be part of the center. And then the next presentation I have, which I promise you it wouldn't take that long, is going to also show you how we are able to add more supports without adding to, um, that, that budget that we have.
It's some, I'll make this brief, that in some ways, it's, it is, makes economic sense because the kids are staying in the district.
Yeah.
As opposed to moving, needing a purchase of service,
Yeah.
which is costly for taxpayers.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for bringing it up, because I don't think that, um, maybe, maybe some people don't really understand that. If a student leaves our district to receive this type of support in a neighboring district, you still, you still are responsible for educating that child.
Right.
And so what happens at the end of the year, Rockwood School District receives a bill to take care of those academic needs of that child. And so what we're trying to do, so, thank you, Lyndon, it's a money saver. We're trying to take care of all those things and house for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is awesome.
All right, and then?
Now you're going to keep talking, right?
All right, so this, this really
The Hazel Health?
Yeah, Hazel Health. So this is, this really was, uh, was going to go as a consent item. And I ask Dr. Ricker and Jen, if I can just take a second to talk about this, because I just really want to say, thank you so much for your support of all of our students and their social, emotional, mental health. Hazel Health is a program that we already have in the Rockwood School District, and this, this is a continuation of that, that level of support. The, what we have before, now in the district is telehealth. So any student without a doctor can, uh, with parent consent, can visit a doctor and receive the medical attention that they need. So this is the extension from the medical piece to the mental, emotional piece. We already know that twenty-four percent of our students are experiencing major, uh, mental health issues. We know that one to six, there, there's like a six-month wait for students. And this is really important. Our counselors and social workers talk about this all the time. We know that we have students that are in need of mental and emotional supports and needing to see a therapist. The reality is the therapists, therapists are booked, and it's really hard to get those supports for our students. And this is where the Hazel Health program comes in at. So Hazel Health is a program that is, just like I said earlier, is a telehealth program that is able to meet the immediate needs of our students. So this allows, they, they have more counselors nationwide that allows for our students to be able to connect with a therapist as we see fit with the consent of a parent. So how does it work? One piece that we really want to start to focus on, and Shelley mentioned this from an academic standpoint, but we definitely want to look at this from a mental health standpoint, is the mental health screening. So if we can screen students who are struggling early on, we can provide the early prevention, um, plan before a kid is in high school and it's too late. Again, all of our counselors and social workers are doing an amazing, wonderful job, but they all would tell you that their caseloads are high, and they can't meet the needs of all of our students, and we need some, some level of support. And so with, um, Hazel Health, they give us timely access to ongoing therapy. So in theory, no student who is in need of a therapist will have to go one to six months without that therapist. And this is just the four areas and what they're, they're going to focus on. Behavior, health assessment, student assistant program, crisis consultation, and case management. Just want to highlight one piece here. Uh, for the last six, seven years, I've been, the Executive Director of Student Services, I've been asking and talking about, uh, a need to create a student assistance program. You, you all know that we have, in fact, unfortunately, we had to use our, uh, Employee Assistant Program today at Marquette High School. So any one of our teachers who are struggling with multiple things or just need some support, financial support, so on and so forth, can call our EAP number, uh, for free to the teachers and receive mental, emotional support, marriage support, financial support, substance abuse support, so on and so forth. I think it's a, one of, one of the most amazing, wonderful things that we offer as a school district. And I always thought that we probably should have something very similar to that for students. I'm so happy, super happy to announce, with the help of our finance team and cabinet, and Dr. Ricker giving me the green light, thank you so much, we will have a student assistant program, um, just like the EAP, EAP program for our students. So students will be able to use and get therapeutic support as needed. No student in a Rockwood School District in need of therapeutic support should have to wait one to six months. And once we have this program up and running, we'll get all the information out, work with families so they, they know that this, this is there, and our students will receive the supports that they need. Um, I think honestly, that's, that's, that's it. Like, that's the big piece. We have a student assistance program, tele, telehealth for our students. We'll go, go through the same consent process, Dr. Kinder, that we would go through with any other, um, therapeutic support. So no student would be able to just meet with a therapist without those parents being informed.
Terry, can you bring these two presentations back in maybe February and redo them again? Or something along that line?
Well, so we're going to bring the, the Wellness Center back once we have the person hired and the schedule worked out and some of those logistics. So yes, and obviously, we can definitely bring this back once we have everything set up and ready to go.
Yeah, I just like Shelley's, I'd like your presentations to be in for, in front of a larger audience. Nothing against you folks out here that stay. But I'd like, I'd like a larger audience to see it, if at all possible, if we can work that in.
Yeah, it feels better to go in the beginning, because I, I, I know you all had a, a long day, and I just feel like I'm, I'm, I'm kind of going through this fast.
This is important. No, this is important stuff. This is, this, this piece is really important.
And we followed every single step. We just want time to think about it and bring it up again.
Thank you so much. We'll be back in February, March. Got it.
You say March?
Thank you very much, Dr. Harris. All right, next up, proposed agenda for the January twentieth Board of Education meeting. Up behind me. Take a look at that.
One thing I want to, as, point out, especially for the people at home that are still watching. All of the curriculum items, Shelley has her process ready to go for those curriculum items. So if we're going to do new stuff, we'll follow that, that process that she mentioned.
Be okay, though.
All right, uh, let's see. Future agenda presentations and events to attend. Check your Google Calendar. We will have a very busy January once we return from the new year as we begin our search, uh, process a little more deeply for our next superintendent. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, do we have another Southeast Missouri graduate in the audience? No, I mean, that says Southeast Red Hawks. Two up here on stage, too. We dominate tonight with what's left. That's true. Southeast did.
All right, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.